I'm recording.
It is now seven o'clock, we will call to order this meeting in the Rollin County School Board and as of our custom meeting, Rollin County time of Mrs. Blanty, would you call the role?
Mr. Crammer?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Miltel?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. Steed?
Yes.
The board intends to recognize Mr. Ray.
Thank you. For the fourth consecutive year, West High School's leading people, the citizen and the constitution, came as one of Wisconsin State Championship. Competing against teams from across Wisconsin at the state capital in Madison on January 7th, West High School won the right to represent Wisconsin at the National Leading People Competition in Washington DC in April. Social Studies teacher Chad Metreski is the advisor for the team. The fourth consecutive state championship ties Rollin County's East High School for the most consecutive wins in the competition. East High School had two teams taking part in this year's competition. Both teams finished second and third, giving the district top three teams in the state. Social Studies teacher Alina Meyer is the advisor for the East team. Lead People is sponsored by the Center for Civic Education. The program is designed to spur broader understanding of politics and public affairs among high school students. The program is hosted in Wisconsin by the State Bar of Wisconsin, Public Education Committee, and the Wisconsin Law Foundation. West team members are Waaj Ali, Daniel Bruckner, Max Massa, Ellen Saucker, Alexandra Utech, Katie Creese, Daniel Engel, Ellen Kirkley, Emeline Prattee, Nicole Sebignak, Amelia Hornsmo, Lea Moss, Luke Salamow, Daniel Schnack, Drew Zanskus, Mitchell Boltman, Megan Canfield, Savannah Rice, Martha Schuster, Madalena Zimmerman, Allison Deenan, Amira Echols Sabri, Alexandra Finkin, Alexandra Lindstrom, Erin Murphy, Catherine Adams, Alexander Chu, Megan Falk, Kara Gaines, and Zakaya Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Congratulations to each of these students and to their advisors. It's quite remarkable accomplishment to win this four times in a row, and I think we shall be very proud of these students at both schools in providing us with the top three teams in the whole region. We now move to our action items, starting with business services. Mr. Meyer?
It is recommended that the school board approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of an EXRO account which is structured into the basis of serving of the general obligation refunding funds dated February 1st, 2006, and I so mean.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Is there any board discussion? Is there any community comment? Saying none, Mrs. Blanty, would you call the role? Mr. Crammer?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Miltel?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mrs. Steed?
Yes.
Everybody, Mr. Steed, morning. Mrs. Kurtin?
It is recommended that the school board approve the creation of an elementary library media services coordinator position, elementary library media services needs, and elementary Spanish teaching positions for the 2011-2012 school year, and direct administration to implement a plan to teach Spanish and English for elementary schools beginning in the 2011-2012 school year, and create a transition plan that includes teaching and appropriate world language offerings at the sixth grade level beginning in the 2012-2013 school year, and I so mean.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
To create a little bit of framework here, because I know many people would like to speak on this tonight, I believe Dr. Earl would like to make a statement. Following that statement, there'll be an opportunity for board members to ask follow-up questions or clarify questions from Mrs. Derrinberger and others who might be here to present on this issue. So there'll be an opportunity for public comment, and board members can make a final comment before we call for a vote. So we'll begin with Dr. Earl.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to thank everybody that's here in attendance and those who've communicated with me over the past several weeks regarding this particular issue. Once again, as is always the case in our district, regardless of the issue or particular funding here, it is clear that most of us share the belief that the education of our students is and should be our top priority, and decisions should be made with that in mind. So let me take the chance to address some of the questions that have been asked and some of the concerns that have been raised. While there's been information put out regarding the world language program, but the board has been asked to consider tonight is simply the approval of new positions. If these positions are approved, then the development of the curriculum and the allocation of classroom time to programs can be enhanced. I think everyone in this room understands the budget constraints facing this board and every school district, but we remain committed to moving this district forward and improving quality of education for our students. Unfortunately, there is not an opportunity to add programs, but equivalents offset any reductions. This has been a clear record to meet from the Board of Education. The challenge is to do this while at the same time improving opportunities for students and not creating any reduction in services that data shows will create a negative impact on students. I strongly believe this proposal does both. As to the question of why we have chosen to suggest this particular course of action, I can tell you that it came down, as it should, to student achievement. Through responsible fiscal management and sound educational decisions, this board and our district have successfully fought time and time again to save programs and services which are proven to enhance student achievement. While there's no question that library media specialists have played a unique role throughout the history of our elementary schools, as this district looks to the future, we must continue to dedicate our resources to those areas which will have the most direct positive impact on student achievement and overall success in our schools. Benefits of the language learning and early age are well documented and research-based. This proposal uses our resources in a way that we believe best prepares our students for the future. There have also been questions raised about the implementation of the world language program. Let me address a few of those. Some wonder whether the amount of time allocated to instruction is sufficient and appropriate. It is our district's goal to provide the best program possible with the resources available to us. For 30 minutes of time for a week recommendation, this sets a baseline so that there's a standard benchmark on which to gauge student achievement. We believe our model takes us into account and takes into account the fact that language learning takes time. Therefore, it's quality teachers, sufficient opportunity to make significant strides in student achievement, and also provides students with the best opportunity for success. There have also been concerns raised during implementing the program in all grades and months. Where are counter- this can be done? The curriculum can be established and the program can be integrated in grades 1 through 5 simultaneously from beginning of next school. Some also wonder whether the middle school curriculum will have to be adjusted. The answer is yes, because the students will be entering middle school with various levels of language ability. Those changes will be gradual and seamless and down the way which provides the best opportunity for student success. The most common concern perhaps is then whether the students will continue to have access to the libraries and library resources. Again, the answer is yes. In fact, it will have more. They will continue to have access to the current library resources and more digitally enhanced resources. We will have the libraries ready for student access on day one of the school year, and they will not be closed to students the last two weeks of school, nor on specific days where there is not a library. We will also be working with Rollin County's Recreation Department to determine needs of students and parents for access to libraries, and we look to have additional hours outside of the student day during the school year and during the summer. There are also some questions related to students of special education. Research on how students learn language legitimizes the fact that most students are candidates for the world language program. But most importantly, if a student's disability and title is unearned and receives special education services, the study of world language will be included in that student's individualized education plan or ID. As is always the case when a proposal includes some type of reduction that might have changed, some will question whether other options were considered. The answer to that is yes, and in fact, the sheriff's office would. We looked at reductions or elimination of the elementary office program, but we also considered limiting the music instruction, opportunities and choice of programs available for students. We chose not to pursue those options because we believe our music programs, life language and provided data-supported positive impact on student achievement. We considered shaving instructional time, so one on PE, music, and art, but that was not a practical option, as those times were mandated by the DED, and would have to be carried out in classroom teaching. Another option was to offer a world language program only as a work department after-school program, charging the fee for participation. We do not believe this is an option that would benefit all students throughout the district, that it would significantly promote language learning or would advance overall student achievement. It has been offered in the past. We also considered the possibility of sharing principles of other elementary areas. We looked at reductions of the central office and its support staff, but such reductions would not create any change in instructional time to allow for language learning. Considered reductions in teaching positions achieved by one-day reading classroom teachers, teach subjects such as PE, music, and art at the elementary level in addition to their classroom duties, or increasing secondary class sizes. Both of these options are would potentially have a negative impact on student achievement. We also considered the consolidation of services and staff for our secondary levels. Unfortunately, many of these areas will have to be considered in the near future as more drastic funding challenges are ahead. There will be more difficult decisions to come within both staff, which may have an impact on some of those. The option we are proposing, we believe, provides the best opportunity to achieve the appropriate balance of funding and instructional time to make this language learning initiative a success for our students. Finally, let me address the questions concerning the staffing changes we have proposed. With any change of proposal involving staff movement, relationships will be affected, and that can be very difficult to accept. But it is vital to continue to do all we can with the resources available to us to promote student success and achievement, and move this district in a direction that will make it a leading education. I would not endorse this proposal forward without believing that we can accomplish what we set out to achieve, that we can do it efficiently, effectively, and within our means, and most importantly, that it will have a strong positive impact on all of our students as we move forward. Thank you.
Board members, are there any questions for Mrs. Derrinberger, or Mrs. Blanty, or Dr. Kurtin, or Dr. Mr. Miltel?
I have some. Thank you, Dr. Kurtin. Could you help me understand more about what pitfalls they transition in this by levels? And I'm not sure if this is your question or if other staff members might want to answer. For example, to allow you more flexibility as an administration going forward into the next school year since this will be a pretty tight implementation, is what I understand, would starting at the first and second grade level be more, allowing more flexibility?
I have talked to school districts that have both done phase-in and also have chosen to do it all at the same time. And in fact, Oregon School District, this is the third year implementing the program where they did not phase-in. They started kindergarten at first, second, third, and fourth grade. They actually view it as having considerable advantages that relate to having instructors being able to collaborate with each other in the development of curriculum. They thought it provided more flexibility for teachers to be able to be in buildings so they wouldn't have to be trapped, spending some of that time traveling, but they would actually be able to be on site. They felt that the work that they did in their curriculum was much more creative because of cross-section of experiences from having instructors hired all at the same time. They felt that writing the curriculum each year, it's real important that you're not, it's not a rewriting curriculum, it's writing curriculum and using, reusing the curriculum from the first year, the second year, the third year. They found considerable advantages to having more differentiation available at a grade level for students. So I think there's lots of advantages to being able to phase-in, or to be able to not phase-in as much as there is to phase-in. So it's, I've talked to districts where it works both ways. I think in Oregon School District, they were very clear to say that there would be hard press to find anyone that didn't feel that their implementation went very smoothly and continues to do so.
You said you had a few questions.
I don't actually have any more. I mean, one of the advantages that I see in a large reorganization, if you will, is that you can keep some experienced staff while you change over into new staff. However, there can also be a drawback that you might not have buy-in once you go out on a new program with new existing staff. So I'm keen to probably consider that and how that would work. I know this is a little bit of a pointed question, but I just want to make sure that we have enough flexibility and enough staff going into the next school year to be able to implement this program.
The other thing I would add then, if they did say it was really important to be able to hire high-quality staff as early as possible so that you have choices of being able to get the very best, the quality of the instruction was extremely important, and they felt that the earlier you could hire and have teachers available to begin at the beginning of summer writing the curriculum. They began in June, and they were able to implement by fall very readily. They also explained that you're not writing the same, not writing a different, completely different curriculum for each grade level, you're writing the developmental curriculum that when you're first starting out. So, any more?
And I guess in terms of hiring good staff, I would note that we've already had interest expressed from existing teachers who hold appropriate certification in elementary and Spanish, and also from teachers from other districts who are really excited about being a part of starting up an elementary language program. So it's generated a lot of interest from teaching staff, a lot of enthusiasm, and I believe is an indication as to the pool of candidates we'll be getting, the positive spots.
And so the deliverables then for this Spanish program, the language program, they're not to be proficient coming out of elementary school?
That would all be determined as you write curriculum. I have talked with people on proficiency-based programs and those that do not have proficiency as the goal. It's certainly not where Dr. Kurtin, who is the leading researcher expert in the United States, is advising us as to what that exactly would look like, what we'll use as our indicators at each grade level or at certain key points in the language development at the elementary level.
Any questions? Mr. Crammer?
Thank you. My first question is for Dr. Kurtin. You replied to an email I sent you from Citizen that wrote to me, and I don't think it still showed everyone how you implement over five grades at once. You described in the email how everyone gets a first-year curriculum, the first year, and I don't think I can explain it to anybody, so I was wondering if you could explain that.
The way that it would work is that in grade one, sorry, in year one, everyone in grades 1 to 5 gets a similar curriculum, but of course, there would be adjustments based on the developmental level. So six-year-olds and 10-year-olds can, 10-year-olds have a bit more retention span and so on, but the curriculum would be basically the same. So everyone in grade 1 to 5 would get the year-one curriculum. In year two, everyone in grades 2 through 5 would get the year-two curriculum. In year three, everyone in grades 3 through 5 would get the third-year curriculum, and so on. So that by the time the program gets to grade five, the curriculum would have been developed year by year. So it's not that five years of curriculum have to be developed at one time, but one year of curriculum had to be developed at one time. And of course, it would be tweaked as the years go by, and it would be amended, but basically, the work would be done. So the work that would have to be done for September, or excuse me, for August, would be one year's worth of curriculum. And proficiency targets, just to add on, would also then be established for what kind of proficiency expectations there would be at the end of that year.
All right, thank you. That was, you sent me particularly good explanation there.
I wish I had explained it that well when I was here the last time. Thank you so much.
And I guess, Ms. Derrinberger, one question I have from that, in the first few years, you know, when the fourth and fifth graders are getting year-one curriculum, year-two curriculum, I presume they'll be getting most of their social studies in English, right?
That's correct, yes.
So where will, how will, where will the minutes come from to teach both Spanish and social studies first years?
What we'll do is, and one of the things in the conversation with the Oregon School District, when they didn't do the phase-in, they looked for seven themes that tend to be social studies-related. So for example, immigration. And immigration shows up in both our fourth and fifth grade curriculum, Wisconsin immigration, and then US, United States immigration. So they said there are some common themes that we can find and tie to those curricular areas, so that would be the way that we would look to be able to tie the social studies in and yet be able to use some of that instructional time.
All right, thank you. This is for Ms. Kynstra. Someone wrote me, and I thought had a very interesting idea that we were going to be a world language district. Why not have three schools each have Spanish, German, and French, and that way promote all three languages and maybe make a more world language program? Can you explain how, thinking if that was looked at and why this decided to stick with one language?
I think we maybe need to start with the terminology, and that this is not exactly a world language program. If we are just representing Spanish, we could call it an elementary Spanish program. But what our goal is, is to incorporate more global competency in preparing our students to be involved in, as citizens of a global community. That's a demand for 21st century skills, I think, that's coming from our federal government even, that our students need to prepare, be prepared at that level. Undeniably, Spanish is a societal norm right now, and in choosing this language, we are preparing students for the day-to-day job placements that they may face upon graduating high school, even in the jobs they have as high school students, in interactions at the grocery store as elementary students, and what they may face in college and then beyond in terms of employability. There's a daily feasibility behind Spanish that I think I, as a German teacher, have to acknowledge. Do I worry about what this might do to the other languages that we have in the district? Yes. However, in deferring to the experience of other school districts who have implemented world language programs at the elementary level, they have seen students choose to continue after they've been in, say, Spanish in elementary school, but there have also been students who have said, you know what, I have not Spanish at this point, I'm going to try a different language. And that's what the other languages in the middle school and the high school, where they will get their involvement from, are those students who choose to do other things. One of the things that Mrs. Derrinberger and I have discussed is that when you do have to develop curriculum, and you are dealing with a group of teachers who are doing that, you will be able to collaborate much better if you're all speaking about the same, in the same terminology, within the same language, as opposed to having a couple French teachers, a couple German teachers, a couple Spanish teachers. I personally feel, you know, from my own perspective, that I believe we could do different elementary schools, but at this point in time, I think it puts everybody on a level playing field across nine elementary schools, and they'll have similar expectations that are then testable, and you can analyze them to inform curricular decisions, and I think that's something that we do need to take into account. For, I think, for those reasons then, the proposal has been brought forward with just a Spanish program at this point. I think we'll be very successful in that, in that measure, knowing that we have consistent expectations and collaborative capabilities across the district.
Thank you. This is for Mrs. Derrinberger. When we wrote the long-range plan, one of the primary concepts in this curriculum section was that, you know, we have a regular curriculum cycle that reviews all the subjects, and that those reviews include outside experts, administrators, teachers, and community members. And that has led to the evolution of our curriculum cycle and curriculum council, and has worked very well for all the subjects that have been looked at so far. I didn't actually realize till now that we have standards and benchmarks for library sciences, but that's not part of the curriculum cycle. So I guess this is for the teachers, whatever it should be on here, but the question I want to ask tonight is, in the absence of having a group, you know, outside experts and a committee like that evaluate library sciences, how did you go about evaluating the role of the library program in literacy when you were making these decisions?
If I may, we looked at a number of factors. Obviously, we started by looking at the guidance the Department of Public Instruction offers in this regard, and the recommended number of minutes at each subject level. As we previously noted, libraries not, one of the subject areas was the focus of the deep-gauging nation. Even with our own breakdown of the minutes that we spend on instruction, libraries aren't really included in our English, Language Arts, and those standards are to be integrated in the classroom, including our media and technology standards. So when taking a look at the various subject levels in terms of various elementary subjects, what could be integrated most easily within the other, within our regular classroom teachers' duties? Library sciences and that information access and technology access, some of it should already be covered within the classroom to one degree or another, and some could be most easily incorporated. Doing a lot of further reading, we took a look at the guidance that the Department of Public Instruction put out there regarding improving reading performance. And while the Department of Public Construction does have a document that attempts to correlate the presence or absence of librarians to reading scores of districts in Wisconsin, the guidance about how to improve reading scores for students in schools provides a lot of advice. It focuses on curriculum, it focuses on making data-driven decisions, it talks about having staff development, which came to our professional learning communities where teachers focus on data, and references, you know, the access to library, or to, excuse me, to specialized literacy teachers. The only reference to libraries within that document actually are references that school district should be encouraging parents to go to the community library, and so despite the fact that they have an extensive set of documentation, they don't actually reference [inaudible]. Library sciences and that information access and technology access, some of it should already be covered within the classroom to one degree or another, and so could be most easily incorporated. Doing a lot of further reading, we took a look at the guidance that the Department of Public Instruction put out there regarding improving reading performance. And while the Department of Public Instruction does have a document that attempts to correlate the presence or absence of librarians to reading scores of districts in Wisconsin, the guidance about how to improve reading scores for students in schools provides a lot of advice. It focuses on curriculum, it focuses on making data-driven decisions, it talks about having staff development, which came to our professional learning communities where teachers focus on data, and references, you know, the access to library, or to liter, excuse me, to specialized literacy teachers. The only reference to libraries within that document actually are references that school district should be encouraging parents to go to the community library. And so despite the fact that they, they have an extensive set of documentation, they don't actually reference school libraries within that document. And I think that is very telling in terms of the critical parts of literacy development.
I would say after that, that the classroom teacher and our reading specialists are the primary, have the primary responsibility for reading instruction in the district. And that is where accountability by both federal and state law lies as well, with no child behind legislation, the account really lies with that teacher. So I, I don't think, I want to debate what kind of influence librarian, librarians may have on literacy. That, I don't know how we can pull that out and measure it. But, you know, with the recent Common Core that came out for English Language Arts, these standards were embedded into that Common Core, they were not delineated separately.
All right, thank you.
Any questions? All right, then at this time, we'll open the floor for community comment. Again, I would ask that everyone who'd like to make a comment, approach the microphone, state your name and address, and also please limit your time to three minutes, so that everyone who'd like to have a chance to speak does have a chance to do so. I would also ask that everyone in the audience, you're in this business meeting, and you're trained for offers such as applause. Thank you. Anyone who'd like to make a comment, please approach the microphone.
Hi, I'm Emily Wyner, six eight two six West Wisconsin Avenue. My daughter goes to church in elementary. And I look at this, you know, we talk about the library time and how much it impacts. My daughter's a strong reader. I emailed all of you guys, you know, she loves to read, but she's not pushed to read and to do these new series of books about Mrs. Tivitts, guiding her along the way on all these different books that come out. I just can't help her out with all these different series. I just want to reiterate that I urge you to vote no for the staffing changes that are proposed. I firmly believe that eliminating library specialty, media specialist positions will only harm our children, not help them. Reading and technology is what these kids need to survive in this ever-changing world. That is what will get them a job. I volunteer in the library monthly since my daughter's in fourth grade, she's in third grade now. And it's amazing to watch the children, they always constantly come up and ask for suggestions. I always have to refer to Mrs. Tivitts because she's with them year after year after year. She knows these kids personally from kindergarten all the way through fifth grade. She knows what each kid especially likes to read, what kind of they're into, kind of their reading capacity levels, different things. And she's the one that has to suggest those books. It's amazing to watch with those kids. A book one child likes, the other might not like. Because of her personal knowledge and her interaction year after year with these children, that's what keeps them interested in reading and therefore learning. My daughter's a strong reader and needs a challenge with a bookcase full of books. She prefers to read all the library books Mrs. Tivitts introduces her to. She's, fights to go to school when she's sick and absolutely loves school. When I asked her what she'd like to learn, if she had to choose between Spanish and library time, there was no thinking. She looked at me and said, library, of course, ma'am. She acted like I asked a stupid question. She urged me tonight to come, and she said, just fight her Mrs. Tivitt's job. I really like library and being able to read all the books she introduces to me. So again, I just urge you to vote no and getting rid of library media specialists. Thank you.
My name's Carolyn Ressler, eighty-one oh-two Aberdeen Court, Long Joseph. I'll be brief, since I've written to all of you, and I figure you know how I stand. I'm glad to hear that the board values the input of the community, and I know you've heard from the community. I feel the so-called restructuring of library media services is ill-advised. There is data, and from other states, that shows the impact of library media specialists. I understand the budget constraints, and I applaud sound fiscal policy, however, not at the expense of our students. The idea that at a time when we're using more technology, and we will be using more and more technology, that we should cut out of the position of the teachers who teach the use of this is beyond my comprehension. Library media specialists enrich reading abilities, they teach research skills, and they implement technology. I urge you to vote no.
Is there any for the community comment?
Good evening, my name, good evening, my name's Mike Giver, eighty-one twenty-seven Hill Press Drive. I have a few comments for the board this evening. Let me begin by quoting my college graduation speaker, Dr. Martin Crokin like, the advice he gave me, or at least the only that I remember from that speech, is gentlemen, listen to your wives. Because my wife couldn't be here, I asked her what she would say, and her response was simple, reading, reading, reading. Substituting one educational pursuit with foreign language that will enhance reading for another, library science is just not good enough for our kids. We talked last time about one in seven students in this district not being able to be proficient in reading. I'm happy to see that there's an effort to try to enhance our educational pursuit in that, but not at the expense of another. There are some statements of fallacy that have been made in conversations I've had with school board members and others that I want to draw attention to right now. First is, we can't have it all. That is a statement of fallacy. At least in this instance, we can. There are over eight hundred positions in this school district, and we're talking about eliminating six librarians. Dr. Earl, thank you very much for your comments about other pursuits that you will theme to, to fund this initiative. Initially, what we were told is that library science is just isn't as important as world language, and then we were told it was a month then, now we're told that it's a minute issue. I think that's what you said in your comments about why we couldn't share principles or reduce central office staff. If you need minutes for instruction, please take that, the sixteen minutes you took away from my daughters on Wednesday afternoons to implement additional instruction. If that's not enough, please look at staggering the beginning time of the days for different teachers. So the teachers and the, and the instructional staff may not have to be at the school longer, but keep the students there longer so that they can have both the library media specialist time and the foreign language time. Another fallacy that I have heard often in my conversations with members of the board is that we hired the superintendent and we are to listen to him. I just am appalled at that. You aren't in a position to listen to the superintendent. His voice is extraordinarily important in this conversation, but you all are elected officials. You all put your names on the ballot, and those parents and others, here and not here, voted for you. You all need to represent your constituents in this debate and not simply defer to the administration. That is a scapegoat easy out. The talk, conversations I've had with many of you indicate that feedback you're getting is as much as ten to one in favor of world language without jeopardizing library services. I hope that you will do that. Thank you very much.
My name is Mia Desmar, eleven one four four six five, Tyler Drive, fifth. I'm the library media specialist at Washington Elementary School, and I am speaking on behalf of all of the district media specialists. I know that you've received a number of letters, phone calls, or emails telling you what the elementary library media specialist does during our library classes. Elementary school library media specialists deliver a specific information and technology literacy curriculum to all grades, J K through fifth, on a daily basis. We know that you've been told that this curriculum can be taught about us by being embedded into the regular teaching day. Teachers have also told you that while in theory this may be the case, in practice it will not be. Teachers cannot effectively add another entire spoken sequence of information and technology literacy standards to their already crowded day. While the district's published Q and A states that this model has been adopted by other surrounding districts, it fails to follow up and ask the more important question, what is the result of this model? Is the information, technology, literacy curriculum still being consistently delivered? Unfortunately, in Waukesha, in Franklin, and other school districts, it is not. Instruction is suffering and uneven at best, and middle school teachers are now killing students who think that research equals Google. Walertos of students deserve more. Adding hardware to our buildings is not to quality instruction in using this hardware to meet learning targets. I would like to share with you some of the other essential things that an effective library media program provides to students and staff outside of the regularly scheduled student contact time. Students and staff are provided with these important services when they are in a building serviced by a certified library media specialist. Curriculum support by evaluating, selecting, and purchasing materials, print and non-print, that support and extends treasures, everyday mathematics, and other academic curriculum. Help teachers evaluate and select quality internet websites for teachers' instructional use and student research use. Emphasize and reinforce effective research methods by reminding staff and students of the other resources that our district provides, World Book Online and Badminton includes, not just Google. Help teachers integrate instructional software and other technology tools into the teaching day by demonstrating how these might fit with an upcoming unit. Work with teachers as they develop units. Travel shoot technology hardware issues throughout the building during the school day. Give support to students who are identified as approaching or beyond the learning targets by providing additional resources to meet the needs of these students. And foster a love of reading and literature by being the building expert in the children's literature field. The library media program provides us with a unique opportunity to know each child throughout the elementary school career as a thinker, a reader, and a learner. We urge you to vote no, and preserve the vital services that a library and media program staffed with certified, degreed library and media specialists provides to Walertos and staff and students. Thank you.
Is there any for the community comment?
Melissa Bible, two fourteen, seventy-sixth Street. I just wanted to comment on, I grew up in a district where I have a teenage in elementary school, and I cannot even tell you how beneficial it was to me to have that opportunity to learn a language in elementary school. It not only helped me in my other subjects, it broadened my view of the world, and it gave me just the skills I needed to live in a global society. And it helped me become a better reader, and it helped me in all my other subject areas. And I also think that while the library media specialists do a great deal of work, and I think that what they do is important, I do think that it's important to integrate what they do into the rest of the day, and integrating curriculum is so important. And with this program, it would allow teachers to integrate the technology standards, as well as Spanish being able to be integrated into all the other curricular areas. So I fully support this proposal when I ask you to vote no.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Paul, eleven five seventy-four thirty-five West Wells. Thank you everyone for your service to the community. I apologize I arrived a little bit late, so if there was discussion, I arrived in the middle of Dr. Ellis's statement, if there was discussion regarding servicing certain students with special education needs, I did not hear that when I arrived. So let me share my comments. My concerns are, is there a plan, has the board heard a plan about how we are going to service certain children with certain disabilities in a world language? For example, are the current, have the current special education staff been consulted with to find out what they may need to implement this, and have we prepared for training for them? Will the Spanish teachers that we're hiring, are proposing to hire, be knowledgeable about changing curriculum to address the needs of certain learners with special education needs? I, I know that district staff have been talking to other districts, but could we have a consultant to work with our student services department to help them with understanding what some of the challenges will be with teaching some of the students in a different language? I'd also like to highly recommend we consult with attorneys who have special education backgrounds, to be sure that we're not infringing, infringing upon, or denying rights under F A or I D A. I do have concerns about the standard, we heard that we're proposing Spanish and social studies, that that could be integrated into other standards and benchmarks, and math, and science, et cetera. So my concern, are we going to be going back to the seventies and segregating students because of disability and having a difficult time with already learning, but not learning subjects in a different language, and how we will deal with that? Obviously, the I E P process is what drives the plan for these students. So will parents that have had I E Ps developed since September first of two thousand and ten be notified of changes in the curriculum and then be invited to, you know, at any time, a parent could call the I E P team together, but I think that we would need to make sure that students that have these I E Ps are notified of a major change in our curriculum so that the team can reconvene and talk about those special needs. If the I E P process, you know, if the, I don't know if anyone's heard yet, during the I E P process, it's been determined that, for various reasons, that this is not a practical idea for that student. Who is going to teach that student, and the standard and benchmarks in English, and how would that be done? Who will it be done by? Is that person qualified to teach those particular core curriculum areas? So I'm just feeling that we need a plan beyond the I E P will figure this out, because I think the I E P will show for certain students, and we've heard from the, the expert, Dr. Curtin here, that there are certain disability or diagnosis groups that this is not going to work with. So have we devoted the resources to be able to teach all students so that they all can learn? And I would just like to see a solid plan. We did lose a twenty-five reading specialist at our school, and as I've learned tonight, that, I mean, obviously, reading specialists are very important in literacy, so that's a concern with me also. So thank you, that's what I'd love to say.
Chrissy Hyson, thirteen oh-one, North Seventy-first Street. First, I'd just like to say, I don't think, A, anybody has an issue with foreign language or all for that. B, just from what I've heard this evening, an issue is not the availability of libraries. Our community, I'm pretty sure most people in Walertos do use our public library, it's always very busy, the programs there are great, we take the kids to the public library often, as well as the school library. So our issue isn't that the kids are going to be able to get into the libraries at school, but that they have educators there to lead them and teach them what they need to know. And I have a question, then, if it means that the classroom teachers have to implement what our library and media teachers, they're not there anymore, will classroom teachers have to get further instruction, technology and media, in order to teach the students what our librarians are teaching them? I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Is there any for the community comment?
Good evening, my name is Patrick Coffey, eleven fifteen, North Second Street. I have two daughters from the elementary school, and I also teach at Walertos School District. I am here tonight because I have a concern, I do hope that you vote against this. I, what really got it for me was the question by Mr. Crowder, to the table here, and that was, what research did you do to discover the impact? How did you measure the impact of library, of library sciences today? And there was a pause, a hesitation, and kind of looking at D I standards and, and the theory. And it took me back to last, the last meeting that we had at the Fisher Building, and that was in the hallway, and there was more people. The gentleman talked about the cloud, the cloud, technology, the cloud, and the cloud, and the technology differences. And that's one of the things that I see here is, there's, there's a disconnect, I believe, from what's going on in the trenches. And what the theory that we have here is amongst the, largely hardworking people. Zerberger, I work with Zerberger, they work the least, and we have a good relationship and we're down committees and so on. But one of the things having down on committees is that there's times where there's that certain... separation and they don't know what it's like where the fangs ring. The impact at the trenches, it all sounds good on paper, it all sounds good in the plan, but how, what are the teachers going to have to cut? As a social studies teacher, I'm very concerned about a watered-down social studies program. I'm worried about what are our teachers going to have to cut to implement the very necessary library and media skills? Being a high school teacher, it's really important with adding technology advances for our students to have the understanding that you can't get everything, it's not all the truth, that there's a difference between what you find on Google and what you find on at St. Host and so on. That's crucial. More importantly, I'm a graduate of all the Tulsa schools and I remember my librarians from Jefferson to Hawthorne to Longfellow to Tosees, all the way through. And the wonderful coaching, and that's really what you're eliminating is a coach all throughout, it's a utility player that's in the building all the time, that can help on all the levels. That it's hard to measure, but there is essential for the learning culture that exists in a school. So I urge you, I know sometimes at board meetings, there's a meeting before the meeting and we go through and we go through this process, I urge you to reconsider, I urge you to vote against this program and vote against this resolution. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Beadens Frailing from 725 Cedar Street. I'm concerned that students and teachers should think about this because they haven't been asked about this and the students will be learning and it'll be taking up a teacher's time, so I really think we should think about what the students are going to learn. And I encourage you to vote no.
Is there any further community comment?
Margaret Justin, 213 North 114th Street. I appreciate all your time and listening and those of you who responded to my emails, I urge you to vote no. Again, please listen to your constituents. I have a couple of issues, I know you mentioned that the literacy teacher, I'm losing my thought, but has a great impact. Fortunately, I suppose none of my children are struggling readers, so guess what? They've never seen that teacher. The teacher that they see at the library and who knows their children, who says, oh, Andrew can read that story, oh, this is a good one from Marissa, oh, Andrea would love that book, who knows them from the beginning to the end. My children don't see the reading teacher, fortunately, I guess, but if you take away the library and media specialist, they will not have no one who knows from beginning to end. You mentioned that there's additional cuts that are going to be coming. Can you guarantee that in three years, four years, five years, we're still going to have the resources to have this rural language program? I don't know. That's a good question. You mentioned writing a curriculum that they would start with, just everyone would start at the same curriculum, but you're talking about teaching this in social studies. So if you're teaching the same curriculum, how are you going to be teaching Spanish and social studies to a first grader and to the fifth grader? I'm missing that. And I agree with the gentleman who spoke before me about the disconnect. You say that the teachers can embed this in the curriculum. Have you seen how busy these teachers are, how late they're there, how hard they're working? I don't think they can do another thing. I really don't. They rely on the library and media specialist. Many of them have difficulty, I believe, integrating some of the new technology because they just don't have the time. Please, please rethink this issue and please vote no. Thank you.
My name is Elise Bowler, I live at 1831 North 71st Street, and I have two boys and one in Lincoln and one in Longfellow. And thank you to one person responding, two months that I sent, but I didn't share with everybody here. And I wanted to say that I have approached many people, many different levels through the school district about the lack of creativity in the classroom and why it's been such an extraordinary change from the time my son Calvin, who is now in seventh grade, to my son Brody, who is now currently in fifth grade, the huge change I've seen in the drop in creativity and unfortunate teachers and principals and people at the curriculum making decisions, decision-making level. What I've been told is it's teaching minutes, over and over again, teaching minutes, which makes me question, again, the Wednesday planning, getting into, I mean, that sounds wonderful, but how can these teaching minutes be so valuable and so critical and we don't, and the teachers are going to infuse this technology into our kids and they're going to teach them how to research and how to, how to understand how to get through the technology safely and find what they need to find out? It's intangible. What one person in our school, in our school, especially Daniel, what difference one person makes to our kids' days? It's unbelievable. And you're talking about eliminating one person. I think we need to think very carefully about the kind of atmosphere we have in our school, about what we're asking for our teachers to include in their incredibly busy days. Things have been changing and they're still changing because this is a very negative change. And I would urge everyone to think very carefully about eliminating this one position before I urge you to vote no.
Is there any further community comment? If you're just wanting to speak next to a comment, it reminds me of getting out of the water a little faster, I appreciate it.
My name is Tiffany Barrett, 7401 Watson Avenue. I'm the Lincoln Library coordinator, I've spent a lot of years helping out in the library. And I speak to you as a parent whose children spent the first three years of their education in a Montessori environment, which I was very pleased with, but I moved them to Lincoln because of the quality of the school system, with the expectation that I would return them to Montessori if they did not do well. Not only did they do well, they thrived in that environment and it has everything to do with the curriculum that has been offered. I have seen what Mrs. Daniels does in the library, I'm blessed to have children that are very strong readers and are sometimes difficult for me to keep up with, new things to keep them interested, and she always knows them very well and is able to anticipate their needs as they grow and change. So I urge you to vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Ms. Barrett, I haven't known this woman, excuse me. PTO library about chairman.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I thought I knew the title of the chair.
Hi, my name is Michelle, thank you more. I live at 1917 North 84th. I have a son at Longfellow and one in fourth grade at Everwell. I have several disjointed comments to make as I am taking notes. As a parent, I have not only tried to tutor a Spanish program, but also hired a private woman to teach my children Spanish. I fully, fully believe that Spanish, French, German, any foreign language is of huge importance to our children. However, I also cannot comment enough on the fabulousness of the library specialist that we currently have at Roosevelt, Mrs. Dranger. My kids came home and I have two completely opposite readers. One was struggling so hard and he has come a long way now as a fabulous reader and one has just been fabulous all the time. They have both come home to me and said, look at what Mrs. Dranger suggested I read. Look at what Mrs. Dranger suggested I read. And unfortunately, although they get books from their teachers, never once have I heard them say, this is what Mrs. so-and-so suggested I read. I've only heard it about Mrs. Dranger. And I have several considerations for you that could gain us a little bit more thought. We, I'm not a big fan of the early release Wednesday rec department program. My kids have done it, they're bored with it. They do the same exact thing semester after semester, they come home with the same art project. I don't know if you could consider doing before or after programs with Spanish with children who are truly interested in Spanish? Not all children will be. Not all children are interested in math, I guess that. But, but I think it's truly important to keep library and a foreign language. I just can't even tell you how much, it just seems that when someone suggested over here that the guidelines, the state guidelines didn't have specific language for, toward librarians, it seems like an easy opt, that they were the easiest to get rid of it. You couldn't do FIAE because they had language, you couldn't do somebody else because they had language. And it seems as though this hasn't really been thought out as much as it truly could be. Historically in Tulsa, when we hit obstacles like this or the community hasn't thought it's been thought out well enough, seats change the next time because people get so irritated that it hasn't just been thought out enough. And it feels like this is one of those times. I really, really urge you to vote no today and put more thought into this. Thank you.
So, my name is Rebecca Ellis. I am a parent of two Underwood children. I have currently been working with a librarian there for almost three years. I volunteer once a week and I work one-on-one with her and I also assist some of the children there. It is not about, as you know, checking in and checking out books. A lot of parents think that it is, you know, just the checking in and out. Their job entails a lot more. They're showing all the technology, how to do research, reports and things like that. That also goes on to help them in their class with their papers. I myself went to a Profield School, grade school, and then I went to a very high-upstanding high school. I do not recall learning any type of research. When I got to college, we had a class that was library research paper. I failed it. I had no idea what I was doing because I did not have those skills to take me through my previous years. I have been blessed with two children who love to read and that is, you know, that is great for them and they come home with wonderful books. But there are children out there that cannot read and to have a librarian that shows them examples of what to read and what to learn, this just, you know, it makes the children really, really open up their minds. And, you know, I know the teachers are, I don't know if they're worried about how they're going to fit this time in. I am all for the foreign language, but I understand that there's possibly just one vote. It's foreign language and getting rid of the librarians and I wish you would reconsider because as a strong supporter of the library, I urge you to reconsider. Thank you.
My name is Deb Cruz, I live at 1903 North 84th Street. I have a son that rolls it off. Just to start off, like Michelle was saying, I have a son who we hired a tutor, so I would love that and we did free or included in this, that would be great, but not at the cost of our library and media specialist. I help out, I started this year helping out in the library and I'm just afraid, I know that you said you're going to keep one library and media specialist throughout the entire area and then have aides, and then you're going to also use parents to help out. And I'm afraid that you're going to use parents like me, I love to help out, but I'm not good at when kids ask me questions, you know, I always refer them to our specialist. I don't know what to do and I'm afraid that the kids are going to get lost if that's all that we have. I urge you to vote no.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Raver, I live at 6261 Upper Parkway North. I'd like you to consider with the differing population that we now have in our schools that possibly we have a population for which the school library is their only opportunity to visit a library, to have guidance by a librarian or someone who knows them to find reading and get reading materials and to get the support that they need for those things that they might not get at their home or in the community that they live in. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mona Cruz, 1823 North 69th Street. I almost forgot where I live. El fallo portuguese, yo hablo español, and I speak English. I am so not attacking the foreign languages, nobody really is. That is not why we're here. We are just here because we do not agree with the way you want to fund this. We do not agree. And there is more parents that disagree with this than agree with it, with the funding of getting rid of the LMS. I don't know if any of you have asked teachers in each schools, really, about how they feel about this. I have. They don't. They don't like this. I know, and you know, same teacher as I do. And so I just want to say, vote no, at least for the proposal, the way it sits now. It is not the right way to go about it. I want languages. We are not attacking you and I hope you know that. We just need a different way to go about this. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Downtrick, I live at 2283 Lawrence 71st Street. I just had a couple of comments. First of all, I'm thankful for your time and I want to thank you for what members I did respond by email, you know, it was great, I appreciate that. I wanted, another parent sent me a comment about that their child doesn't really see the reading specialist in their building. And I have kids that he's from, my child is from, both of my children, although they are very advanced readers. And finding books that are age-appropriate yet challenging for them to read is a nightmare. As a parent and even as a classroom teacher, we have very, very good teachers and that the library and media specialist is the one person in the building who has been able to find books that challenge and interest my children, but yet are not high school content. So it's not an easy task and I very much appreciate having them. And I worry about the void that would be left too, I'd hope my children find, or younger children, because I guess it's mine are getting older, but younger children that are very advanced readers, finding books that, that they can read. Also, my son's teachers are often there in the building until six o'clock. They answer emails on the weekends. They are overburdened, they're very good teachers and very dedicated, but they already spend way more time than I would expect a teacher to be putting to the classroom. And to add, to say that they need to learn all the technology that the library and media specialists have and know the volume and the vastness of the different books, the new books that are coming out, to me it seems an unreasonable expectation for teachers that are reading a lot for our students. And third is, as a scientist, research is crucial. And had I not learned how to do research in the appropriate ways, looked through different bodies because you have to find credible sources, things are reproducible, and that that really isn't as easy of a task if you're not trained how to do it. And that's such a valuable source, important in our current world technology. So I would urge you to vote no for the current proposal. Again, I am a very proponent of foreign language and I think it's very valuable, but I just don't think that the way it's being proposed is the best for our children. Thank you.
Is there any further community comment?
Hi there, Paris Crocus, 2535 North 70th Street. And I'm going to come out in the minority on this tonight and completely support the proposal that's with us. I mean, you heard a lot of things like, everyone I talk to is for it, everyone I talk to is against it, but in reality, we've got to get around the more fuzzies and everything else, we've got to look at the brass tacks. Learning foreign languages at a young age is imperative. I speak foreign languages. I remember by 1006, I have grown tall because I just hold you my place, growing up with a Greek father and the whole works, so. I went, since the last meeting, on one, I don't know if you remember me, but I talked about, we always called our library a poem and a library, we did not have a good experience with her, but that's just me. But I asked my daughters, each one of them, one's now in junior high school and the other one, so she went all the way from kindergarten all the way to junior high school. And I asked my other daughter, who's in 30th grade, currently... And I asked my other daughter, who's in 30th grade, apparently what they learned and asked them separately, kind of a blind test. And they both said that they seem to learn the same thing every year. And this was their perception. Whenever we've always had to ask, we've always wanted to know what sort of child we're reading. When our one child was having a little bit of struggle reading, what's appropriate for reading? We would go write to her teacher. Everybody's thinking that by removing the library media specialist, also their kids have become deliterate and not learn how to read. That is a major policy. We are going to continue teaching them to read. We're going to continue teaching them how to research. If a teacher had to say, I need to write a paper on such and such a subject, they're going to probably show them how to look it up. Backs the question though, and I wrote this in my letter also, that if teachers are not well-versed in technology, that's something that needs to be looked at and made a minimum expectation of holding on to their job because technology is changing and they have to evolve with the technology. And I also would argue that many of the new teachers, the younger teachers coming out are already learning those more advanced technological methods. So I apologize for my disjointed comments here, but I wrote a lot of notes tonight hearing a few things. I've heard comments, a lot of them last year or last week when you guys were doing the meeting, that library media specialists take a lot of graduate courses and stuff like that, technology and stuff like that. I'm very well-versed in technology and I've never taken a graduate course in technology at all. And I would argue that my children are, well, they're very well-versed in technology now. In fact, I would argue there probably were more-versed in technology than half the board members here, especially my former half here, who's amazing already. Somebody made an allusion to the cuts that are coming. The cuts are coming, likely or not, they are coming from the state government. We have a new sheriff in town and there's going to be a lot of, a lot of changing happening. If you have something that looks more valuable, it's less likely to be cut. And I think the foreign language program is more, it's more appropriate. I think if you have the deciding between the two, that should be the direction to go. Bear with me a second. Oh yeah, and by the way, if you can implement this, I am deeply against doing math and science. The United States is already behind in math and science and it'll be much more difficult to try learning that in a foreign language. We need to focus that on English because, you know, social studies, I can think that's fine, but, and I also want to go into the thing about the maybe supplementing the time. As I mentioned, an hour a week may not be enough time to actually learn a language. Supplementing with something like a Rosetta Stone, and I recall you guys took up some research on that over the past few weeks here because if you have that implemented, there are many school systems that are relying exclusively on that. But if you have your Spanish teacher and the Rosetta Stone software as a complement to that, these kids can learn natural language very well and this probably can help them as they grow older. Again, a couple more quick thoughts.
Thank you.
I didn't have three seconds, I didn't have three minutes, alright. But I think you have a great amount of time, but I think you should vote yes for this because it's very important that our kids be able to compete in the future world. And the younger they are, the better they learn, they'll learn, and the better they'll learn how to be able to read in other, in English too, because you can be focused so hard on learning that foreign language too, that's going to help them in the future. Just like money usually helps my daughter with math. There's always correlations. So, and there's still going to be teachers reading without library media specialists that are out there. Thank you.
My name is Chad Layman, 8129 Jackson Park Boulevard. We can, we can talk about the merits of the World Language Program and the library media specialists all night long. Everybody that I've talked to is in support of the World Language Program. I am as well. Unfortunately, tonight, the vote is one or the other. And I appreciate Dr. Earl sharing some options that we've looked at in the past about some potential other staffing situations or reductions to find the money for the six positions or ballpark figure for that. When I, when I heard those, the thing that concerned me was the library media specialist cuts was the only one that's going to impact every single elementary child in the district. The other ones that were mentioned are not going to have that impact. And I believe that it's going to be a very negative impact on our kids. I think it's one that we're not going to see for a couple of years. I think our middle school teachers and our high school teachers in three, four, five years are the ones who are going to see that this was really a bad decision. So while right now it is a one or the other vote, what can certainly happen tonight, and if the board is, is hearing and listening to what all of their constituents have been saying, you can vote no on this proposal tonight and still keep the World Language Program alive by finding it another way. And I think that's what most of the people that I've talked to are looking for. A no vote tonight and let's come back and see what we can do to fund the World Language Program or the Spanish Language Program another way. Thank you.
Beth Julie, 2468 North 88th Street. Dr. Earl, one of the things I like most about you is you don't like to change things. You told us what Tulsa does well, we're going to do well, we're going to continue to do well, and we're not going to try this curriculum and try that curriculum. I don't, I'm not saying that's what you're doing with the Spanish, because I'm for World Language and for kids learning Spanish. But we do library really well in all of Tulsa. Elementary library program is fantastic and I thought it was just at the beginning. But as I've listened to the teachers and the parents and the librarians from the other elementary schools, it must be going well there too, because there is passion about their library and it is we are what are. I am fortunate to have good readers for children. And there wasn't a person in the building that could find a book for my son to read that was appropriate for him, both at a rigor level, something that would be challenging for him, and appropriate for content. There wasn't that. And the teachers are great teachers, but they have a lot on their plate. And now they're asked to be experts in technology. Yes, they should know technology. They should be out to where the kids are at. They should be able to integrate it into their stuff. And that can be something that can be maybe learned rather quickly, but I want to know who's going to be the literary expert in the building. Who are those kids going to be able to talk to? Because while a first grade teacher might know first, second, third grade literature, are they supposed to know fifth and middle school, like middle school and high school level stuff that is appropriate for a first or second grader to read? And there are those students and the people that they go to are the librarians. And on the other hand, you have fifth graders who are reading at a second grade level, but they can't walk around with June B. Jones because their classmates will tease them. Who are they to ask? The librarians are who the experts are. And to take that literary specialist out of the building, his children will not have access unless they go to the library and whether they get their amount of spending on their parents. Or what community they live in, and a lot of our students don't live in our community. And you're asking the teachers to be an expert on something else. I think that's a lot to ask of our teachers. And someone brought up whether the children want to learn this or not, what they thought about it. And I believe the school board got a sign petition from some fifth grade students and some other students at McKinley. They love library. They absolutely love it. They've learned a lot from their librarian. I just think we've got to get back what you're giving up and there's not a place where you're going to get that literary specialist. Thank you.
I am the parent of two children at a family elementary school. I am in my 18th year as an educator. The last seven years I've been in the Elmwood School District. I feel I am well-versed in technology. However, the library media specialist in the Elmwood School District is much more capable to teach the current fourth graders, fifth graders, and all the way down than I am. However, I am well-versed in technology. She has an understanding of the technology standards. We work directly with that library's library media specialist to integrate into the curriculum. However, her expertise allows us to then have a product come out that is way better than I could ever do with my fourth graders. The staff development or your teachers to get upgraded in the technology skills will cost a lot of money. Substitute pay, if you do it within the school day, it is not an easy funding. If you want to have a new summer school or summer classes, that will cost a lot of money. Maybe the staff development and technology will surpass your budget and then you're in a hole and you'll have to find a different funding source for the staff development. We need to keep our library media specialist, again, I would welcome a World Language Program, however, not at the cost of the library media specialists. They need to be separated. I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Vanessa Mitchell, 10874 North 119th Street. I am a product of library education and I ask you to vote yes. Nobody's denying the importance of a librarian. My daughters love going to the library. I do not think they only check books to fill her out. I know that they do much more, but please do not vote no. We Americans are already lagging behind in comparison to other countries when it comes to learning other languages. Universities around the nation have a foreign language proficiency requirement and the earlier the children start learning, the more ahead they are with this requirement. Please consider this. I don't want the librarians to lose their positions. I know they are important, but it's also important that we have this foreign language proficiency. Thank you.
Is there any further community comments?
My name is Molly Del Vecchio, 3303 North 107th Street. And I would just like to reiterate something else that was mentioned tonight, which is that for many students in our community, the school library is the only library they visit. The school librarians are the only librarians they know and interact with, day in, day out, year after year. So I would like to speak for those children and say, please, save our libraries, save our librarians. Please vote no.
Is there any further community comments or members? Would anyone like to make a comment? Was it you?
I have several, actually. First of all, I would like to give voice to some of the correspondences that I have received from teachers, classroom teachers, and I, pardon me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe we've had anyone speak tonight or in our last meeting. But these are teachers who are contacting us and telling us that they're willing to take on the responsibilities. They are already doing this in our classroom, that they are teaching technology, research, reading and love of reading. And so I want you to know that I am hearing that from our teachers, although they're not here since tonight. That's one thing. Secondly, in a lot of my interactions with the community, I noticed that it seemed that people had partial information. It wasn't made clear that there has been a special and false library media role over a period of time. And that in fact, whether or not this changes, whether or not we're going to have a foreign language, we will be needing to change the library media specialist role. It has been reported to the board in a variety of ways. We've gotten foreign language reports from the systems, we've gotten technology reports from Mr. Price. So we knew changes were coming. So yes, these are tied together and yes, there's a financial impact, but it's not the clear black and white that I believe some people are aware that it is. The other concern that I really heard was that there will not be anybody qualified in our libraries once this happens. And so, Mr. Chan, I'm going to ask you, which I followed that we spoke and then I asked you to put some information and ratings about why you believe we will have qualified, credible employees staffing our libraries under this new plan. And if you wouldn't mind sharing the important points of that, I would appreciate it.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I'd be happy to. I think one of the concerns, it was a concern, was not just the board members, but also to me directly, that the thought was we would be able to find certified staff who would want to work at aid rates or want to fulfill the duties of a library aide. Our experience in terms of hiring is that 22 of approximately 100 or so aides are actually teacher-certified. It's a rate that they accepted and we are always able to fill the certified staff and we put that requirement on there. In addition, we looked at what the going rate was for librarians, for library services in the greater Milwaukee area. The Bureau of Labor Statistics publishes regular statistics on average wages for both librarians and librarian technicians. The average salary of a librarian in the Milwaukee, West Alice, Waukesha data track is $51,810. That's assuming that those librarians work 2,080 hours, which is a full-time employment. The mean salary of all library staff is $65,846. We have 191-day teaching contract. We pay on average, our average dollar we pay for our librarians is $43 an hour. In addition, we took a look at the job duties of a library technician, which is roughly equivalent, not roughly, but very equivalent to the library aide job description that we're looking at. The library technician average salary for our census area is $12.25 to $12.95 an hour. $12.95 in the median, $12.25 in the median, which is roughly $26,000 hours. Our average aide salary is, well, since our average, our aide salary using teacher certified aide rate is $24,000. Again, that's for 180 days of work versus 191, because they do not work all the days that a teacher does. We also looked really carefully about the evolving role of librarians. And if you look at the Bureau of Labor Statistics information, they actually discuss the fact that many of the job duties traditionally performed by librarians have been delegated to library technicians or library aides, vocabulary you're using. And even within school libraries, technicians and assistants encourage and teach students to use the library and media center. They also help teachers obtain instruction, materials, they assist students with assignments. And these are considered the hallmarks of a library aide-type position. While it's difficult to share that information, the reality is in looking for effective, efficient ways to staff our libraries, the market rate for the services that we're asking for in our schools and in our elementary schools in particular is not currently overpaying for those services.
My one final comment, and I might have asked Mrs. Aaron to address this, but there were a couple mentions of the Wednesday really released time. And it's my understanding that some of that is what gets leverage and time and that our classroom teachers are... our classroom teachers are doing some of that time, becoming technology leaders, and they are also, I believe, learning from the library and media specialists.
At collaboration time, the library and media specialists meet as a group, part some of that time and some of that time in the buildings with grade-level teams. And we also have district teacher leaders that provide some instructional technology support that are also part of that team as well. It's a collaborative effort in delivering instructional technology. It's a partnership between the classroom teacher, district teacher leaders, the role of library and media specialists may or may not play depending on their level of expertise. So I guess that would happen on Wednesday.
Thank you. Yeah, I know and respect many of our current library and media specialists, so it's difficult to have a discussion, but it can't be about relationships. It has to be about the children who are in the outcome and the quality of education that we can offer.
Any other question, or is it taken away?
I just wanted to ask specifically, there have been a lot of comments tonight about technology and how we would integrate it into the classroom. And I know I had a lengthy conversation with Mr. Price to try to, and also Ms. Amberger, to try to understand, which a lot of the questions that we hear tonight, what, how is this role functioning in our elementary schools? And the answer was, was quite surprising to me, but I understand why it's there, that our professionals in our buildings make these services transparent to our kids and to the people and to the parents, that there are many people involved in, for example, delivering the technology and media services. It's not just the library and media specialists. There are other individuals that are also involved and it's a wonderful testament to how the staff is working together to try to do this. And maybe Mr. Price could also share some of what is happening with technology in the libraries and how that is changing and already currently in what's happening. So if we could just comment a little bit more about the staff, the technology, because I know there's a lot of questions still in that particular point.
As was shown in Mr. Chan's presentation last two weeks ago, the libraries will be transforming into more of a collaborative and project-based learning and information center. So there will be changes made there. They will be extended beyond what they are currently capable of doing in terms of, like I said, projects and global collaboration. From a staffing perspective, could you be a bit more specific on what you're asking?
Well, from what I understood, there is, there are different people in the elementary buildings other than the library and media specialists that actually perform those technology services.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure. In every building, we have an individual that receives a stipend and that individual's role is a multimedia coordinator. They're really the localized technical support. Because the technology services does not have an individual in each building, there is, it's important to have some localized knowledge and support for the odd questions here and there that have come up that need immediate attention. Currently, the multimedia position in some buildings is filled by the library and media specialists. In other buildings, it's fulfilled by a teacher or an administrative assistant, whoever wants to adopt that additional burden and receive a stipend under the approval of the building principal. So as we move forward, that position will not go away. That's from a support perspective. From the instructional perspective, it is a collaborative effort, as has been mentioned before, the district teacher leaders are involved as well with the integration of instructional technology literacy standards. And to a certain degree, the technology services also provides training services to staff.
Mr. Ray?
Thank you. At the last meeting, I talked about how this is a difficult decision. One of the reasons that it makes it a very difficult decision is because we're dealing with two issues, both of which can have positive impact on students. And trying to figure out which of those two positions is the best one to recommend or to be in favor of is difficult. It would be much easier if you were dealing with a situation which was clearly a negative and a situation that was clearly a positive, but we're not. Another thing that makes this decision very difficult, and I speak personally, but I think that every board member is in the same position, is that we have, we know individuals who are in a position that are being affected or being impacted by what we're being asked to vote on. And we know that people in those positions would prefer that their current status maintain where it's at as opposed to being changed. And knowing individuals that are in that boat makes it a difficult situation to be in as you consider how to move forward on the issue. I think objectively, as a board member considering this, I have to try to factor that out of my thought process and move forward with the two proposals or the proposals that have been presented to us that we have to act upon. To cut to the chase, I guess, for me, what it boils down to is I hear from our administration willingness to put their absolute best foot forward to make the recommendation work, to make it work for students, to do it in a way where things that would be missed from a change in the library and media specialist position would be addressed. And that is a challenge that I think the administration has put upon themselves and the challenge that the board would have to hold them to, to move in that direction. But hearing them indicating that they are willing to take on that challenge and make it work the best as it can, as this issue moves forward. Having heard all of those things, having heard all of the voices from the community, and read many, many of the emails, and again, I want to be complimentary about the tone of which this discussion is taking place, because it has been a very civil discourse and a very knowledge-based discourse. I think for everyone who has spoken, it seems like the heart of our students is at the core of the discussion that's taking place. The decision is a difficult one and whatever the outcome of holding forward, it's a good one.
Mr. Carr?
Thank you. This is a very difficult decision. I don't mean to make a light of the situation, but a few days ago, I was hoping to come here and use my favorite parental technique and say, I'll think about it and hope everyone will forget, but I can't do that. When we initially received the proposal, it seemed like there was a very good information from a lot of different corrections, technology, foreign language, and a lot of different things. And I had to think about that a lot, and Mr. Ray alluded to this, and I finally distilled things down to me, which to me was the essential question. And that is whether the benefits of a foreign language program are greater than what we would lose by losing the library and media specialists. In other words, if you have to weigh the both, both of them, which program provides the most for the most children in the district? And I appreciate Dr. Curt coming and explaining so clearly the benefits of foreign language programs. And I've looked at some of the studies and, you know, it's clearly beneficial and I think everyone here agrees with that. But I also found many studies that also show the benefits of having full-time library and media specialists in the buildings. There's a particular study, someone sent me from Colorado, the percent of the state of Colorado, that showed depth when it correlated reading levels with amount spent on libraries and with having full-time librarians in the buildings, that if you reduce those positions, reading levels actually went down. And it wasn't just Colorado, but, you know, there were a number of studies like that. So another thing about the Colorado study, I think that bothered me the most was that it seemed to show, and this is a particular concern of mine, that low-achieving students were affected the most by not having a library and media specialist. And so, you know, many, some students lost reading ability when they lost their library and media specialist, but it seemed to affect low-achieving students the most. And one of our main goals in the district is, you know, closing the achievement gap. And that's supposed to be one of our highest priorities, and it is. And so I think for me, that's, that's an important thing that we have to think about. So then we have this balancing, which is the most beneficial. And I think the, what persuaded me to decide to vote against this proposal in its present form is realizing and looking at our goals in the district, that reading is our primary focus. It's in bold type, it's our number one focus in the district. And while I don't know that our library and media specialists are, job configuration is perfect for our reading program, maybe it could be improved to have more impact on our reading program, I come to the conclusion that losing the library and media specialist is going to have a negative impact on our core focus in the district, which is reading instruction. And so, in putting in an either-or situation, we're going to have to vote no in its present form.
Mr. Ray?
When I cast my vote, and I will vote yes, it is a product of balancing the needs of the children to read and love books. That's one consideration. And some of the best people we have in the district as employees are sitting in front of us, and they're telling us they can make this work. The second consideration is what I feel is a compelling need for language skills in the world that our kids are going on in. And this proposal provides that. The third consideration is why I raised my children in Milwaukee, so, and why I still live here and why I want to be in service to the community on this board, is the belief and the value of the relationships of the adults and the people, the employees of the district with our children. And this vote basically trades against those relationships in favor of the compelling interest in language. And it is not an easy vote. Part of this package that makes that less unpleasant and less difficult is that the representation that's been made to us is very likely that all of these employees will be able to remain in the district, working with our kids, and I believe they'll be at the same salary scale we are now. They won't be born if they don't want it to be born, just the understanding. So those are the factors I have to balance, and that's the reason for my vote.
Mrs. Wood?
This is my file on the emails that I have received, and I still have a few at home that I have not completed. This is a difficult decision, and I strongly supported rural languages. But I cannot, up until about 5:30 this evening, I still was undecided the direction I was going to take. But Pete's coming back to me, what each and every child needs in this community, and it's the joy, the ability to read at all levels. I cannot, I cannot support this resolution that is before me. And please, don't anyone tell me that, oh, we look at music, waiting to even entertain them, because this room is flooded. I just feel so strongly that we have such a great history and we want it all, but we cannot have it all. And I know that there are some serious cuts coming forth, but please, um, to help me then, so my vote will be against this.
Thank you, Gregor.
Well, as the chair, I have to go last. And I do want to make a statement of some type. I think that it's important that everyone in the community who has got in touch with us via phone, letter, or email knows that we do read these. I've read every one of the emails and I've flipped through to the blue wings that you've given us, and I've read all of the documents. I read not only the CBI summary, two-page report, but the 200-page document that you were due before the meeting last week. I'm sorry, I'm getting all my calls, my voice is not as strong as tonight. So I want to thank each and every one of you, and for myself at least, I can say that I have read everything that you've sent us to take into heart. I would also like to thank the administration and commend them for bringing forward ways that we can improve the education for our students and to continue to try to improve the education that we provide. There was reference made earlier to information we received from teachers and to their opinion. And I'd like to make clear, I've received opinions on both sides from teachers. I've received opinions on both sides from everyone in the community. And one thing that no one seems to be against is rural language. People might be against the proposal for different reasons, they don't support the proposal for different reasons, but everyone thinks that teaching our children any language is rural language is a valid and lawful thing that we should try to do. I sometimes lose my train of thought, I'm just catching everything. So some of the documents on my statement, I will actually reiterate, so I don't forget parts of it. I would reiterate that some of the other board members have said that this is a very gentle decision for many reasons, and I think it's the first of many difficult decisions we're going to have, as we want to continue to improve the education of our students without increasing the cost. We simply cannot add programs whenever we like to. We have to contain costs, and so we're going to have to continue to make difficult decisions. I'd also like to address why these two issues are together. That was raised more at the last meeting than at this one, but I think it's clear to point out that as Dr. Irk mentioned at the beginning, the board has told the administration, if you're going to bring us a new program, we need to know how we're going to pay for it. And so that's why these things are presented together, because this is how the administration is deciding we need to pay for this program, is what they're saying right now. I'd like to deal with the library issue first, because in my opinion, and I want to make it clear, I'm speaking only for myself, not for the board as a whole, whether it's now or in the future, the library and media specialist position is going to change. I speak as someone whose first job in the school was in the library, and I just know the duty does well to my heart, because it was my job to help that society, to make sure everybody worked. I have been a library volunteer at Lincoln for, I think it was 11 years ago, the first time, and I was a library volunteer for Mrs. Brennan and Mrs. Daniels, and for the last couple of years I've not been able to do that. I understand what library and media specialists do and how they interact with our children. I think that there are really two main functions that the library and media specialist does. There's what we think of as a traditional library, helping with reading to the children, helping them gain a love of books, kind of reading, helping select appropriate books, a lot of the things that were mentioned here tonight. What I think of as a traditional library, there's also the library and media instructional part of that, and that interacts both with the students and with the teachers. It is my opinion, based on the information we've received in the course of these proposals, that that first function is not going to be. It will not be informed by a master degree library and media specialist, but there will be library services in our schools. I know that this is not a popular thing to say, but you don't need a master degree to help children buy books. You do need to have a You do need to have a love of books among the children, and the strongest way to get the two of them together is to love a book. I think that that part can be handled by the A's described by Mr. Chaney. The, I want to say, Mr. Chaney, I think the community research department has a strong obligation, should this proposal pass, to engage in very stringent practices to make sure that our children do have the services of a strong library A's in the schools. It's the technology and information and instruction part, which I believe must have changed. Technology is now being woven into every part of life, and technology instruction must be woven into every part of destruction. This will probably require a change in how we deal with the curriculum, but media and technology cannot be separated from reading, writing, math, and science. Every teacher should be a teacher of technology. The corollary to that, of course, is that we as a district have to provide teachers tools and knowledge they need when they happen. I am not yet convinced that one district or elementary media services coordinator is going to be enough for many schools. Should this proposal pass this evening, I would encourage the administration to involve elementary teachers in the transition process in order to ensure that the realities of the classroom are considered, and if necessary, add another elementary media services coordinator to the staff and class. With all that being said, for me, this decision is not hinged on library staffing. That's going to change, it's just a question of belief. The issue for me is the rural language proposal. And as I've said before, almost no one has spoken out saying we should not have a rural language proposal. Research shows that foreign language instruction benefits students in many ways, and I don't think there are many people saying we don't want to fix, because many people say we don't want to have a foreign language program. I understand that you're rating opinions that we don't want to lose one specialist to pay for their own. There have been questions raised about how we should add students with special needs of different types, and that's a very valid concern. I visited Waikiki last week and observed first and second grade classes being instructed in Spanish. While we were there, we were told that out of a population of almost 600, only five students were not participating in Spanish. And those students were, the decision was based on their IDP team. All the students who came to visit all these names were successfully incorporated into the classroom, and actually, one of the classes we appeared to have a child with quite obvious physical disabilities in the classroom fully participated in instruction. This is an issue which clearly has to be specifically considered and addressed in the curriculum development process, but I do not believe this decision, whether to postpone the proposal should handle this issue. The issue involving students with special needs are often individual issues in a number of these cases as well. My major concerns with this proposal revolve around whether it's really feasible to roll off this program in the fall, whether it's the best option to implement all the elementary grades at the same time, as opposed to phase away over several years in the lack of a sixth-grade foreign language program. I wrote this this afternoon, and when I wrote it, the time, because I continue to struggle with these issues, this is something that I think we've lost much of a lot of time, but there are about two problem documents remaining today as we listen to everyone here tonight. For this motion to adopt the program proposal now and spend the next year developing a curriculum, resolving the special needs issues in middle school, addressing the technology education changes and other issues, which will certainly come up in the process, and then implement during the 2012, excuse me, 2012, 2013 school year, I would not have any hesitation, I would vote yes without any difficulty. With a much shorter timeline, excuse me, with a much shorter timeline of implementation in the 2011, 12 school year, I am concerned. There's an incredible amount of work necessary to make this work for our students. At the beginning of the discussion of the proposal, I thought I would vote no, to try to do all the things needed to implement this program in a manner that is beneficial to our students, as well as incorporate the changes to media, program delivery system, media program delivery system. Put this in a position of trying to do too many things at once. I ascended this into Waikiki Elementary School and observed the social studies being taught to persons in second graders. I've read that the Oregon School District implemented a language program in all grades at the same time, and this has had success. They did have to write curriculum on an ongoing basis as the English students moved through grades, but also found a benefit in the teacher collaboration across grade levels. I've been reminded that more than 10 to 10 years to have an exploratory English program in the sixth grade, and we do have some experienced teachers in rural language at that level. I also had a very helpful conversation with Lady Tunsford, that I know without a doubt she has the best relationship to our students in mind. She has reminded me and assured me, excuse me, she has reassured me about her, excuse me. Mrs. Tunsford has reassured me that implementing this program as proposed is doable. One other aspect to me is the need to expand the viewpoint of our students. I believe that we as Americans are fairly insular. We need to change that. I've had the opportunity to travel overseas several times in the past few years, and I'm always impressed by the number of people in other countries who speak at least two languages, not like period four. We're slowing a bit, because the second language is usually English, which makes it very easy for us overseas, but it hammers home how narrow our view sometimes is. My grocery clerk in a remote area of Iceland speaks English, German, and her native language, and two Americans with graduate degrees are fluent in only one, shame on us. At some point, we have to change. With all that said, I am still concerned. I hear the concerns of every citizen and district teacher who sent a letter, or an email, or call on the phone. I'm sure that if this proposal passes, it will be launched on the road to full implementation. We as a board are faced with maintaining the status quo, and we're looking forward with an opportunity for our students, which carries great promise. So again, thank you to everyone who has taken the time to write, who has come here to express your opinion. We do listen, whether we agree on the rest of our conclusion or not. I would also like to echo Mr. Ray's point that the tenor of this conversation has been more or less, and I do appreciate that.
Respond to which call the vote? Mr. Drummer?
No.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Melville?
No.
Mr. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
No.
And Mrs. Speed?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is the Monastir program proposal. I suggest we take marks and identify the precise grounds of the proposal. We will reconvene at 9:00. On the agenda is the action of the superintendent's section of the history.
It's recommended that the school board approve the creation of a Montessori program for students of grade J-K to buy, to be located at the Fisher Building, beginning of the 2011, 2012 school year, provided that there is sufficient community interest to support the school. Specifically, in order to open a classroom for a particular age slash grade level, there must be at least 20 students registered to that classroom, starting March 15, 2011. Number and age groups for each classroom to be opened in the initial year shall be based on the age and distribution of students applying to our mission. It's also recommended that the school board approve the following policies, as presented and discussed at the January 2011 meeting. Group 1, policy 1220, employment of the superintendent. Policy 3122/4122, non-discrimination and equal employment opportunities. Policies 3160/4160, physical examination. Policies 3161, on-request medical leave and absence. Policies 3362/4362, employee anti-harassment. Group 2 of the policies, 2414, human growth and development. Policy 3419.01/4419.01, privacy protections of self-funded group health plans. Yeah, new policies 3419.02/4419.02, privacy protections of fully insured group health plans. Policy 3430.01/4430.01, family and medical leave of absence. And policy 8504, environment health and safety program, and exam.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Melville?
We have to, we have separate discussion and separate action, which are both true.
You're saying we have objection to separate action? So you know that we proceed in that manner, let's begin with the Monastir program proposal. Board members, is there a discussion? Mr. Carter?
I'm going to make a statement. I'll just state that I don't believe that elementary charter schools are the way to move education forward in that district. The data on several studies that came out are mixed, even of charter schools and inner-city schools. And one statement from an article in the Wall Street Journal that looked at three of these studies said that while there is some consensus among these studies, researchers generally have found that charter schools in low-income urban areas boost test scores while suburban charter schools in wealthy areas don't. And so I understand that one of the goals is to give parents choice, but I just don't think under the economic conditions that we're going to be in, that opening elementary charter schools is the right way for the district to go. I'd rather that they focus on reading, writing, and math for all the students in all the buildings, rather than open up specialty elementary schools. I know that one of the arguments for doing this is to bring new students in the district, but my belief is if you want a district, that's the first thing at the seams. So that you teach reading and writing to children better than any other district in the state, will have more kids ready than a county. So while I know that everyone has good intentions, and I know that this is a well-thought-out program, it's just not a philosophy that I have to move in this direction.
Well, just clarification, we are not talking about the back of charter school.
No. Mr. Ray?
Clarification with respect to the numbers that are indicated in the motion. The numbers are specifically focused on the number of students that are being registered in order to build a classroom for a particular age or grade level. My question is, what if we are in a circumstance where we have 20 or more students at that level, with JK, Best K, first grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, one age level that I didn't mention, I can't remember, was second grade, I think? We only have 15. What would that scenario mean for the program as a whole?
I think I understand your tentative question. I think one of the challenges is to keep in mind that we're really not going to agree with the programs, because each classroom is multi-grade. But, yeah, it is possible that we would have too few students in an age group that would defeat the purpose of having a multi-age classroom. That's the effect of your question. So for example, if we look at the, what is Montessori, if the day is out, the intent to offer multi-age classrooms, so students in children's house classrooms, ages four and five, lower elementary is ages six to eight, and upper elementary group ages nine to 11, if we didn't have an adequate distribution of students within a particular classroom, that would defeat the multi-age purpose. And I think the administration would consider that there wouldn't be sufficient interest to open a school. So that 20, we would infer that 20 people guideline would be a little mandatory to also need to be somewhat equally distributed so that it's a sustainable school.
And I appreciate your clarification as my participant who's got the most grade levels versus the classrooms. So I thank you for that reminder. But that's what I'm hoping to understand, if we had one classroom that, in which we would meet that number of 20 students, but we had a second classroom, and that would be like the base classroom, the first classroom, or a second classroom, or we didn't, that is your thought, that that would be an indication that we would not afford the program as a goal, because there wouldn't be sufficient number of students?
I, yeah, that sort of a hole, I think that we would anticipate that there is a distinct possibility that the school might grow up from the bottom levels upward. There's sufficient reason why, although our surveys indicate that there's a lot of interest, why a parent would choose not to switch schools for their fifth grader, for their bottom educational sound reasons not to do that, even though you think we're going to be offering an attractive program. And I would anticipate that today, very well be possible that we would be opening one or two children's houses, if that's where the demand is, and growing the school up from the bottom.
Mr. Meyer?
Would you, Mrs. Keaton, do you plan with you and what is for, what we are looking at to begin a Montessori school? What grades are we looking at? What will each classroom comprise?
Each classroom would, it's very similar to what Mr. Chaney just described. It would be K-4, which is a half-day program, and all day K-5, and that would consist of the first multi-age classroom. There would be an offer of extended supervision for those K-4 students, because they will not be receiving a full day. The model of their day would just be the morning session. And then you would continue on with six, seven, and eight-year-olds. So to put a grade level equivalency to that, that would be the first, second, and some third graders, and then ninth and 11-year-olds. So your older third graders, fourth graders, and fifth graders in a multi-age classroom. Am I understanding your question properly, Mrs. Melville?
Yes. The reason I wanted to review, there was some concern expressed that the strength of the program is beginning with three-year-olds, and we are not going in that direction. We're starting with the four-year-olds.
That's correct.
Has any consideration been given, or is it totally, what happens after the highest level of six, the upper elementary, ninth, 11? Should, have you talked about extending it further than that at all?
I believe that it's something that's not unlike the earlier scenario that Mr. Chaney discussed, where we might only have interest at the younger levels, and eventually the program would have to grow and grow. That may also be the case. If we, if we have enough interest, if it's feasible, if there are students who want to continue on, certainly we have to keep that foremost in our minds. Either we could extend the Montessori program up, or we would just need to be very careful in terms of making sure that those students are accommodated for if they choose to stay in our district, if we do not have a Montessori program. In other words, transition in the middle school.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Carter?
I did misspeak earlier when I was talking about charter schools, but I think clearly this is more than a program as the administration itself refers to as a school, so it is a specialty elementary school. One question I have, though, is grants from the state for opening charter schools are several hundred thousand dollars. So could you explain why we aren't pursuing that as a charter school, where we could use the funding to help you get it going?
Couple of reasons. One is the timeline for applying for charter school grants. They've changed their timeline. And the other case is that we, in our discussions, we don't feel that there's a need to have a governing board to run a Montessori school. And I'd like to comment, but I know I made it last meeting, one December, that looking at just accepting federal funds of charter school funds just for the sake of getting the money, and it lies in the face of what I said in the later about charter schools and what charter schools should be, so I think that's, that's the main reasons why I'm getting pursuit of charter school. Thank you.
Mrs. Melville?
I have one more question. Mrs. Keaton, would you also, what is the role and interest to date?
I don't, I have it in front of me, although Mr. Boyce does. And if I can just refer you back to the initial presentation where we had the survey results, and I'll try to do my best to just verbally go over that for you. When you look at a combination of all respondents, we have approximately 99 of the respondents would consider ages three we have approximately 99 of the respondents would consider ages three through six. That number drops slightly when it's a combined consideration from three to six and then also grades one, two, five. But it's a very favorable response in terms of, at that point, when we were just surveying the public. They need more information, which we have been providing. But it appears that the strongest interest, at least initially now, is with those respondents considering ages three through six, which Mr. Chanan referred to as the children's house. And I would imagine, based on the success of that program and as those students age and as our school becomes more of, rather than just a, I don't want to use the term experimental because it's been around for over 100 years, but new to our district. I'm sure that as that proves itself to be successful, that that interest will continue to expand. That seems to be the indication of a lot of the anecdotal information that I'm getting from families. One of the other examples that they gave is especially with older children. There's sometimes a red sense to remove them from their current educational setting mid-year through what's considered to be their elementary years, so.
To begin the Montessori school, if this is the task, must we have a balance throughout the three classrooms? Or could there be more at the lower level and not as high a number at the higher level to begin?
I think yes, thanks for that, as I asked.
And CP is checking.
No, great. So that's what the survey results seem to indicate and that's what anecdotally has come back to the conversations that that has interested families, so.
Do you have any summary or knowledge about where the interest is coming from? Is it resident? Yes, it is resident.
And I've also been receiving inquiries from families, open and low-income families, asking if, once their children have obtained open and low-income status and are considered students of the Los Angeles School District, will they also be, have the opportunity to apply? So there've been questions from all families that are involved in the Los Angeles School District.
Thank you. Or number that you can put to my ear?
I just want to say that I do struggle with this because of what I perceive as a dilution of focus. That said, some people we really respect really believe in this. So I'd like to vote yes. But I ask that we vigilant that this program is not diluting focus in the other opening schools. I'm a little bit concerned about this being an administration building. I don't necessarily believe that's a good idea for various reasons. That's probably a longer conversation. So I just wanted to express my reservations. So that's clear, that's how I feel. This is a little bit of a reach for me to vote yes. But as I said, I struggle with this idea of focus versus options diversity. And so this is one that's right on the border for me.
You have a board member called? Is there anything you can add on Montessori? Staying up, Mrs. Colonting, which call the wall? Mr. Corrigan?
No.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mrs. Melfell?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ready?
Yes.
Mrs. Sletter?
Yes.
Mrs. Thieb?
Yes.
That brings us to the policy revisions. Is there any more discussion? Mr. Corrigan?
I'd like to amend the Human Growth and Development Policy, 2414.
I think everyone has a question.
Yeah.
What is the policy of 2414?
So the amendment motion I make is to amend the policy and add a section J that reads, "Include age and content-appropriate instruction regarding the understanding of sexual orientation and gender identity. Provide resources for students who have additional questions about these issues and identify and discourage discriminatory and or bullying behavior based on sexual orientation or gender identity."
Is there a second to that motion? Second. Thank you. Mr. Corrigan, would I speak with discussion?
I would, thank you. This came out to me because I went to talk by Judy Blanca, who came to our district to talk about bullying. And one thing I learned from her that I hadn't realized before was that bullying can be deterred by omission, by not including people. And shortly after that, I received a packet of policies that we're going to read tonight. And the Human Growth and Development was in that packet. And I was looking through that packet and I didn't see anything. Let me back up a second. Based on that, I was looking at our new bullying policy. And in that policy, it says that bullying includes things that occur based on age, national origin, race, ethnicity, religion, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, physical attributes, physical or mental ability or disability, and social, economic, or family status. And we have the Human Growth and Development Policy come forth at the last meeting. I looked through that and I noticed that it wasn't anywhere in the policy. Was there anything having to do with students learning about gender identity or sexual orientation? And it occurred to me that if we don't educate our students about these things, at least so they have an understanding of what they mean, that we're not going to be very good at combating bullying that's based on those behaviors. I'm going to point out that on the last page of the bullying policy under education and training, it says, "In support of this policy, the board promotes preventative educational measures to create greater awareness of bullying behavior." And so I think the intent of the bullying policy is to do what we can is try to make sure that bullying doesn't occur in our schools. And in thinking about this, I asked Mrs. Ehrenberger to, because the standards for Human Growth and Development are not on the internet, asked her to look at those. And she confirmed that gender identity and sexual orientation are not topics in our Human Growth and Development courses. And there was also a Human Relations course taught in high school. And I inquired about that course and it's not taught there either. In fact, the response that I received was, "This course is for all students, so we don't include that." And so to me, it was a kind of an ironic statement that, you know, in order to include all students, we're going to admit talking about some of them. So this didn't make sense to me. So I think this is an important policy to have. I think that it's something that needs to be done. I looked on the web, I found the National Association of School Psychologists have some information about this. And they have a position stating on gay, lesbian, bisexual, trans, gender, and questioning youth. And I wasn't actually familiar with Q or questioning, but I know now that many students in our middle schools and maybe high schools are undergoing development and may not be sure what's happening to them or not understanding how they're feeling. And so people that are questioning this, I think, needs to understand and maybe learn some basic definitions about what they may be going through. And the recommendations from the school psychologists, if we're going to create safe schools for GLTQ youth, we need to, they recommend establishing and enforcing non-discrimination policies that apply to all students. And we have that and includes those characteristics. Education students and staff, that's what I think we're missing. We're not educating our students about these issues. Direct intervention with perpetrators or harassment and discrimination. I think we have discipline in staff and I think they take action when these things happen. Direct intervention and support for those students targeted for harassment and intimidation and those exploring the sexual or gender identity. I don't know that we do that. You know, I don't know if kids feel safe coming forward and saying, "I'm being targeted because of this," or if people are threatening them because of that. And I think that's something we need to work on creating an environment in schools where kids feel comfortable doing that. And I think if a teacher that trusts can talk to them about these issues so they feel more comfortable with what they know and they know someone that they can go to, I think that will help people that are being harassed or bullied. Promoting societal and family attitudes and behaviors that have some dignity and rights with educational fairness of GLTQ. So I think my proposal is trying to create an environment in schools to educate kids on understanding of what these terms mean, that what, how people can misunderstand these terms and use them as mechanisms for bullying other kids. So I really have two goals here. One is to help children understand what might be happening to them, what they're going through, that they have resources to go to for extra help if they have questions. And third, to educate students that might tend to bully other kids because of this so that they know that, you know, the simple things they might do might be really harmful to kids that are in these groups. And I'll just end by saying that on policy 3210, staff ethics, the first point, A, is that the staff recognize basic dignities of all individuals with whom they interact in forms of activities. And so I think this policy is even further supportive of this policy that we're recognizing the dignities of work for all of these kids and making the school a safer and a happier place for them.
And then for discussion of the motion to amend the proposal for policy 2414. Mr. Corrigan?
I have a question, which is what are we, if we agree to this, what are we agreeing to do? Are we requiring a curriculum? Are we requiring counseling support? Is there, how big of a program is this? Is this a program? Is this a curriculum? What will it cost? Just so we, you know, I think we need to know what we're promising and what rights we're creating. Can someone answer that?
That's very interesting. Well, the statute contemplates, I guess, we'll start with the official point. He said, "If a board decides to offer a Human Growth and Development curriculum, we could just opt out entirely." But we're a district that hasn't done that and I would say probably most have not. There are certainly minimum state standards. This policy is a rewrite of that based on statute. And we're basically requiring that when we adopt curriculum, it is going to meet these standards. Mr. Corrigan's amendment is really a reminder that when those curriculum committees do that work, which is a reminder, a directive, they will not include this as a topic that should be included within our Human Growth and Development curriculum. And I would say that it's not something that is just simply springs into action without planning and consideration both of the board and other community. And a little bit on page three of the policy, there's a Citizens Advisory Committee that is required to be established in reviewing periodic learning and growth and development curriculum. Then my assumption is that that would be working in tandem with, through the student department. So there's a process. That process would be using the statutory-acquired Citizens Advisory Committee. By adopting this, I think the board would be directing that advisory committee to combat the recommendations regarding curriculum, age appropriate, and sequence that would include this topic. And I think that Mr. Corrigan pointed out, this topic is consistent with many other board policies which are also required by state law. So I think this is an integration in there of our existing application.
So I'm sorry, any more understanding? That the policies as originally presented for action are sourced from and still be Niola and they are to put us in compliance with the law?
Correct.
So unless we want to buy into a dispute with the state or the federal government, we need to vote yes on the original motion?
I'd say yes.
Is there anything else? Is there, was there anything added to the policy stated in the original motion beyond what the old or our retentions present to us?
You know, J would be a separate amendment that would be the only addition.
So J is the only addition. So the first, the original motion puts us in compliance with the law. And please explain again, or me, a little slower. How does J extend this beyond? What does J do to extend this beyond the original motion?
Well, when we look at the policy, like I said, the first paragraph, the first paragraph of the proposed policy, that the Board of Education directs that students receive instruction in the growth and development consistent with state statute to include the following, and of the state through I. Those are statutorily required, if we are going to offer Human Growth and Development, those topics are must be included. J is an add, which our board would be saying, we understand what the state general standards are. And when we use the statutory-acquired process of the Citizens Advisory Committee, the board is requiring the Dallas of the recognition with respect to J.
Are the components of J available within the discretion of the mechanism set up by the original motion? Could the, could the, could the activities required under the original motion in its, in their findings include the elements listed in J?
I think that depends on both how broadly your Citizens Advisory Committee and how broadly the board, when they hear those recommendations, construe those. I think if you look at A, for example, it talks about the importance of communication about sexuality and decision-making, about sexual behavior. I think to some of these, some of these topics regarding understanding sexual orientation and gender identity, I think fairly fall within the scope of A. I think those particular topics, by pulling them up separately within this policy, is to recognize that we have a non-discrimination policy that speaks to those and that we want to affirm that we make sure that they're covered in the curriculum. The issues regarding bullying and discriminatory behavior, I don't know that those are explicitly within the Human Growth and Development. They do talk about responsible decision-making and communicating. But I think that easily, those topics that are outlined in J aren't necessarily required by through I. So I think I understand the intent of Mr. Corrigan's motion here, which is to say, we as a board want to affirm that we make sure those things are included. Could they be included, the others? I think they could, depending on who's assisting or in the curriculum.
Mrs. Ray?
To answer Mr. Ray's question, I, as you said, cover under your seat. Generally, very much. If I'm understanding what I'm reading here, Mr. Corrigan? If I'm understanding what I'm reading here from Mr. Korners, that he wants students to understand that there are different sexual orientations and gender identities and that they should understand that and that would, of course, reinforce not bullying. So I don't think it's necessary here, number one. Number two, I don't have bullying policy on the ballot, and that was one of them that Mr. Korners voted, that's already referred to.
There was none of them. Neither of those were submitted.
Right. But you did quote that there is something in the anti-bullying policy already stating that students can't bully. Now, the last thing I'd say is kind of unusual, but there's something about pulling out the topic of sexual orientation and gender identity that almost seems discriminatory. You know, it almost, it feels to me like, it goes beyond, you know, gender preference or whatever, but we're going to talk specifically about being on this, letting students and people should know those are, I don't know if that makes sense or not, but, it almost, it almost draws not much attention. And I guess, right, kind of the state's kind of should be, maybe Mrs. Korners could be helpful with this, or even storm in the back there. But under that statute for this instruction, there's a subsection that said, "These instructional methods and materials that do not promote bias against peoples of any race, gender, blood, religion, sexual orientation, or ethnic or cultural background, or gender, sexual yam, peoples or children with disabilities." I'm just not sure that we want to allow any individual group of students. And I do think we're already covering the form issue of the human policy. I should like to hear from Student Services, see if I'm saying what you can tell.
This is my, the bullying policy that we do have replaced with the proposed policy that the board adopted, although some are based on our latest recommendations from Department of Urban Construction. So that is, we kind of, we played with our bullying policy and the anti-bullying policy.
But this particular recommendation for adding to the, to the policy that we're proving can I?
This isn't being added to the bullying, anti-bullying policy?
It's going to be added to the human growth and development. I wish I could be more articulate on this.
Human growth and development curriculum has to be reviewed periodically. Ours has not been under review for a specific time from looking at it. And part of that typical review process is that representative group of people need to convene and at that time, these kinds of things are discussed. So like the kind of discussion we're having right now typically happens with that committee work. It's, then that has to be brought before the Board of Education for approval. The health curriculum is under review. It's going to be coming up under review with the science. And we had met with the Department of Urban Construction, we met with John Hiskin to talk with us about the committee work that needs to be done for the human growth and development part of that curriculum review, as well as our other health curriculum. That particular piece of legislation also allows parents to opt out of human growth and development topics. From, you know, the vantage point, it would seem that if you state it in the policy, it becomes very explicit and the committee then, the human growth and development committee that usually is directed to review curriculum and bring that before the Board of Education, would have a directive through policy that would let us know that that is very explicitly being stated as part of our curriculum. So that would be something that the committee normally might have some discussion on. If it was a policy, I don't know that that discussion would be necessary.
Just my final comment, then, is I think this is already covered under section C.
May you put a floor discussion of the motion to add the language in I, J. Mr. Meyer?
I fear the ultimate end result will be to draw attention of activists to the district and make it actually work of the calls to help various people. So I worry the end result will be counterproductive to the intent, is what I can say.
Mr. Meyer?
I'd just like to respond to the argument that it's already included, you know, policies. I mean, it's, there are an unlimited number of topics that could be included based on our policies, the way it's written. It's very broad. The reason I brought this forward is that it's not included in any of our courses. And if we just simply say here, "Well, we think you should include it," but we don't pass this, there's no enforcement, there's no way to know that we're helping kids in that. And I think there are a lot of kids in our district that are hurting, that are alone, that need help. And I think this is the right way to go. This is not, I mean, saying it's in C doesn't make it happen in the district. And I think the kids, I think the kids deserve the education that we say we're here to give them. Regarding activists coming in the district, who cares? I mean, the goal, the goal is to educate our students. I can't believe that we would not give the students the education they need because we're afraid someone's going to walk on the sidewalk for this time. I mean, I'm sorry that I don't find that hard. This is all about the kids. Kids need proper education, they need to know what's happening to them. Other kids need to know what's happening to their friends and to treat them with respect and to not be great then or bullying them anyway. So I am offering this purely as, as a way to help children in the district and to make the district a much more comfortable place for them.
Ms. Korners?
Both sides that I'm hearing, I think, have very valid points. I would like to ask Mrs. Erin Burger once more if she has any further recommendation or information for us.
No, I don't, I think I can say, what I can say on it, I do know it states here, I'm trying, it says, "To use instructional methods and materials that do not promote bias against students of any race, gender, or gender sexual orientation, ethnic, or cultural background." I think it's a matter of how explicit you want to be. You want to be explicit about that, it does, it will influence the work of the committee, the review committee. And if that is the intent, then you're just being very explicit. Probably more explicit than you have to be, but at the same time, it depends on how explicit you think that's, sorry.
This is a very sensitive subject. Do you feel the way it is written at this time, it addresses any needs that might come up? There are certainly, are guardians copers, would they be involved in, if a young person had questions, if they were, yes, someone would go to get some help?
Absolutely. There are one of the resources there in our school. I think that, you know, in addition to the curriculum that's being presented daily to all students, there's also resources available at all of our, at all of our school for students that struggle with issues.
Now, you say all the schools, do you mean at the secondary level?
Well, I think there's different resources at the elementary level, but if I think at the secondary level, some of our, we have different groups that curve and different kinds of clubs and committees at both of our middle schools and both of our high schools. Some are more focused, some of them are just groups that are, for, for example, over at TOS East, they have the, I can't remember the name of my college right now, but a radio club, and it's intended to be inclusive. So through clubs as well as through different support groups available at all of our secondary schools, there's opportunities for students that are struggling with these issues to connect and access resources, get questions answered, and, and kind of help them work through that. So in addition to the curriculum, there's also some direct services for kids with these issues. Is that your question, Mrs. Weller? Yes.
Mr. Korners?
I'm just going to point out that it's not a topic covered in any of our courses at the state level, that's the point I'm asking. And Dr. Erlich, I'd hope you have a recommendation on this policy.
Well, I guess initially, when, when I looked at it, I thought, it doesn't hurt to point it out, I guess I didn't quite understand until Mrs. Erin Burger talks about community role and letting that community role and saying she discussed. Personally, I support that our kids learn about this. Whether it's policy to do it, but I think it's, I don't think it's harmful, but I think as, as the discussion is going on, I think it is a board decision to, about how we work that community to operate and what parameters are going to be put in place. I think maybe it's plain, at least for me, it'll be a different way. I think Mrs. Erin should change this more quickly. Overall, I think it's, it's an important piece.
Anything further from the board? And we will, I'm taking a vote on the amendment to, if that's something you want to say.
I was just going to say that if this policy is passed, it would require us to look at our curriculum and have to make some adjustments in curriculum and make sure that we also have, our parent notification is, you know, also followed as well, so.
But that would be whichever version of the, whichever version, so that's going to take place, whether or not Mr. Korners' proposal is adopted or not?
That's correct, because that is the review that we are coming upon.
Thank you. All right, now, since we have further board discussion, we will take a vote on the amendment.
We have a comment?
Certainly. Usually we do get a number of proposals themselves, but if there's any community comments and requests to modify the proposal for policy number 2414, do I have the additional likelihood?
Hi, I'm Suzelle Lynch, 75, Ocho West, Sankey. I'm going to speak in favor of including this proposal, including this amendment to the proposed policy. I'm a mother of a fifth grader, excuse me, sixth grader at Montcalm. And what, there's a, there's a, you know, bullying, one of the bullying speaker that Mr. Korners referred to, my daughter came home and talked a lot about that. And I asked her whether there was anything in the bullying presentation around gender identity or sexual orientation, and she said, "No." And I asked her whether she's, whether, what she hears from kids, you know, are they calling each other faggot, are they saying that's so gay? She said, "Yeah, there's plenty of that sort of thing going on." And her concern, in her little 11-year-old heart, is that that's creating a hostile environment for students around her who may be, while she's having stirring, stirring feelings for boys, that, you know, other girls having stirring feelings for girls and is experiencing this whole, "I can't say amid that, there's no way for me to talk about those things," you know, that there's a completely hostile environment for kids who are experiencing their budding sexuality as a gay or as a concerned student, okay? So that's, that's already there. And the concern about the explicitness of it and whether that's actually going to cause more targeting, I can appreciate that, except for that, I think when you feel invisible, it's far more oppressive than when who you are is actually acknowledged. And having it acknowledged in something like a curriculum where you're saying that this is one of the other possibilities for being human, you know, your, your worth and dignity is much more respected. I know it's not a non-controversial issue, clearly it is, but I think if we're going to create a climate where all of our students are going to find themselves reinforced and respected, you really need to make this explicit. If you want to look at just some of what's been in the news in the past year, seven or eight or nine high-profile suicides of teenagers who were basically bullied because they weren't lesbian or gay, usually it's young men, or because they had the appearance of being lesbian or gay. Not necessarily that they were, but that they seemed like they were, issues of gender identity. You know, if you are outside the norm, you're a whole lot more likely to be bullied in a way that makes you feel isolated, alone, who's there for you to talk to? I have been a speaker at the Gay Straight Alliance at TOS East sometime in the far past. And kids were really glad to see some caring adult from the wider community who was there to, you know, talk with them about whatever it was they asked them to talk to them about. You know, so there's, there's a lot that we can do curriculum-wise to create a climate that's respectful of all of our students. All right, that's good. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any further commentary? And we will take a roll call vote for the amendments.
Mrs. Erin Burger, in what course or courses at the secondary level would the human growth and development wanted be delivered to students?
There's an adolescent studies course at middle school and there is the health course that's required at high school. The human relations course that Mr. Korners was speaking about is an elective course that's offered at the high school level. We would possibly look to see if there was, I don't know in the biology curriculum, I'm not aware right now, but we have, you know, anywhere where that was addressed, but certainly the courses I just mentioned would definitely be included.
I will not take a roll call vote on the amendment to add language out of J. Mr. Korners, do you agree on what we're voting on for J? All right, yes. Mr. Korners?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
No.
Mrs. Webber?
Yes.
Mrs. Seem?
Yes.
So the motion to amend 2414 to add language in I, J, has passed. That brings us then to the recommendation as read by Mrs. Randall earlier and the amendments that discussed at the last meeting. Is there any discussion on the, the amendments? Is there any community comment? Staying down, Mrs. Lawton, the board's role. Mr. Korners?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Webber?
Yes.
Mrs. Seem?
Yes.
That brings us to the board, the evening of student day.
This evening, Bill Anderson is here, the supervisor of student learning. Bill is the individual from our department that works with the Project Lead Away Committee and the curriculum. He's been doing this from before it started the implementation, so I'm going to turn the presentation over to him this evening.
Good evening. I have a set of notes for you, so I'm just going to go through and share this proposal with you. Going to share with you a kind of a journey before we get into the proposal, but give you a little history of where we kind of started our journey in looking at Project Lead Away and pre-engineering course pathway we created in high school. Started back in 2007, 2008. The school year we began this journey by looking School year, we began this journey by looking into a rigorous curriculum in science, technology, engineering, mathematics, somewhat called STEM, Project Lead-Away program. In 2008, 2009, we implemented our first Project Lead-Away course in the high school in both East and West High Schools, Principles of Engineering. In 2009, 2010, we continued with that implementation, adding another course at each high school, Introduction to Engineering and Science. In the 2010, 2011 school year, we added our third Project Lead-Away course, Digital Electronics this year, at both high schools. For the past three years, we've serviced approximately 350 students in these courses. Five of our teachers have received extensive professional development during summer training for two weeks during MSOE Summer Teacher Training Academy. Four of our secondary counselors have received one-day Project Lead-Away counselor training. And the district has again created a STEM partnership team made up of community members, administrators, teachers, who have been instrumental in helping us develop and move our STEM pathways along and earned us to today in terms of initiating a middle school proposal. So let me give you a little overview of the Project Lead-Away program at the middle school, which is called Gateway to Technology. Sometime now we call it as GTT. Gateway to Technology is an activity-oriented program designed to challenge and engage middle school students. The curriculum adds various career to our curriculum at the middle school level for experience of our students. It provides us an early entry pathway into the science, technology, engineering, and mathematics career pathway. This curriculum develops students' 21st century skills of innovation, collaboration, cooperation, and problem solving. And initial studies and MPS over the last three years of implementing their initial gateway program has shown significant signs to help close the achievement gap in MPS. And that study is ongoing. So that brings us to the proposal. Our current technology education courses in the sixth grade would remain the same. This is a nine-week course in the wheel rotations, daily contact with students. It would remain with our current utilized curriculum, our standards and benchmarks. That course is titled Introduction to Technology. What we're recommending for seventh grade next year is a course entitled Introduction to Engineering Robotics. This course will utilize two units of the Gateway to Technology, which is the design modeling and automation of robotics. This would replace the current course curriculum of exploring manufacturing and engineering at the seventh grade level. That would be a semester course, two nine-week modules that would run concurrently daily. At the eighth grade next year, we would also propose that we continue to offer, we would offer the same course, but deliver it a little bit differently based upon the current structure of the schedule. We would offer the Introduction to Engineering and Robotics, this course to our eighth graders, and every other day contact, again, an 18-week contact over the year, every other day. In year two, we would ask that, again, we look at our sixth grade Introduction to Technology current course and look at, I mean, some of the concepts that we begin to find in our seventh grade curriculum down into the sixth grade, some of the things that might happen, just looking at student portfolios, engineering notebooks, and some other engineering aspects. In seventh grade, again, we would keep our Introduction to Engineering Robotics, and then in the eighth grade, in year two, which would be an every other day course, would be Engineering Flight and the Environment. This would utilize two GTT courses or gateway courses of spaces, light, energy, and the environment. A little projected cost for this program. Startup materials for the two, for the two buildings at both Whitman and Monville, which have been approximately $15,000 for kits and equipment. We will use, continue, we will use existing grant funds at this point for those expenditures. Some additional computers will need to be added to our technology education classrooms and some cabling, and this will be approximately about $25,000. Our initial teacher professional development cost for those two courses for two teachers at MSOE this summer is going to cost approximately 4,500 hours. No school counselor training, again, for our middle school counselors, approximately 500 hours. This would, we would not ask for any extended FTEs. We would use existing current FTEs allocated, and this would be at the seventh and eighth grade replaced in curriculum. Oh, yes, crassive cover or existing teacher professional development and counselor training. So that is the proposal before you tonight. Questions? Yes, John?
The question about implementation in the eighth grade, for sixth grade, if you bring up the concept of incorporating what was done in seventh grade previous year, the first year of the project, and doing that, implementing that in the current course curriculum, where would that happen in the sixth grade and fourth grade and the second grade?
In the sixth grade, some of the concepts, some of the overarching concepts of design would be brought into and looked at if there's a really good fit, such as beginning to help build the pathway of, you know, students creating portfolios, what they look like, what are the base components of a good portfolio. It could be put into our current curriculum that we offer in the sixth grade.
But that would all be done in that nine-week Introduction to Technology course as opposed to building an end to what's happening in the science portion of the, of the G?
Well, it's something, I mean, again, if we go and look at our science curriculum, some of those aspects of, that help students in terms of their organization and how to collect evidence of their work and progress certainly may lend themselves to looking at those things being brought into our science curriculum at some point, that they look at our science curriculum.
Another question.
Can I just say about that? This curriculum is tied to technical education and well science, and our technical education teachers have been involved in numerous conversations and in ways to bring their curriculum to the 21st century, that they've been supportive of making adaptations in their sixth grade curriculum and the seventh and eighth grade curriculum in order to make the technology curriculum more viable for students. So I just want to mention that they actually have been very, you know, open-minded to finding different ways to introduce students to technology at middle school level and want, I do believe that they would like to have some ownership of that curriculum.
Another question has to do with the scheduling. If I'm a seventh grade student at a middle school and I am an orchestra student, I don't want to stop being an orchestra student, and if I'm taking foreign language, I'm always talking in foreign language, is this going to be an option to me, or is this not going to be an option? If, given the current--
Given the current constraints-- Given the current constraints of our schedule, probably not. One of the things that we talked about, or we have talked about, is possible offering it maybe as a zero hour at the middle school, or maybe a eighth hour at the middle school. For initial implementation that first year, we didn't think that that's something to jump into right away, and knowing that the work of the secondary here in the scheduling committee is ongoing, you know, that's another conversation that's going to be brought into the mix.
Final question has to do with some of the budgetary costs. When you're talking about adding a cost for adding computers, is that in addition to money that is already budgeted or targeted, or is that a part of what's already budgeted or targeted for the technology, computer replacement cost or computer purchasing?
That would be, that would be part of our current technology education budget for tech, for, for computers, talking about teen price, so that would be part of the budgetary expenditures.
So basically, whatever his budgetary amount is for replacing or adding computer technology, that $25,000 is built into that number, it's not an add-on?
Yes.
Mr. Erenberg? No, this is for legal, Project Lead-Away basically, is that right?
Yes, it's developing, you know, pathways, pre-engineering pathways, integrating math, science, project-based type of curriculum.
And are we still getting grant support or partnership support for Project Lead-Away financially?
This is past year with our last year for our grant that we received from the current family foundation, so from this point forward, part of our partnership team is looking at, again, forming partners within the community and looking at how do we allocate resources and share resources to help those programs continue.
So the dollars in here are, are money to be distributed until we confirm partnerships that will assist with that in the future.
The current, the current, the current material costs and sort of funds we have allocated, we already have grant funds that we're going to use currently, so it's not going to be above and beyond what we don't have, and that is stacked around the wall, so.
And where does that grant come from?
Part of that is Perkins, part of that is from the current grant.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Mr. Carr?
Thank you. That's an interesting proposal. One I want to ask about, I know in current classes in seventh and eighth grade, students build things, and then build water shelves, and then build co-racks, and we kind of acknowledge that that's a good and interesting thing to do if we have a great high school. So whether, if we move in this direction, which I think is a good way to go, would we be able to offer some kind of a classroom for kids to still build those kind of things, even zero hour after school, I mean, maintain equipment and still offer some kids that have that?
Yes, currently, that's the, the sixth grade portion is to kind of continue to offer that, the building, using tools, those kind of things. You know, part of, part of the gateway program too is, as we move forward, your, your end product and machines that you use to do some of your projects may change a bit, it might be the big high-powered, you know, machines that we used in the past, but nonetheless, we still use tools and equipment to build and produce. So kind of going from the seventh grade, looking at a systematic design process, how to take a design process, take some ideas, put it into practice, and then look at how that affects, and looking at automation of robotics. So one thing I did not mention is the Project Lead-Away gateway curriculum, it is currently already written, it's part of, it's part of the program, the standards and benchmarks are there and they're mapped out. It will be available in the curriculum office for the next two weeks for viewing for both the seventh and eighth grade, so we'll have it available. Thank you.
Well, that was Wes Shatner. As in seventh and eighth grade, I could take Spanish and Deaf and orchestral and shot and science and Deaf and history, but I was in a Jewish high school, I was not in a middle school. So let's put that shot out there right now, and we need to start looking at these things to say, is the period not of music now, keeping options for kids? In much of the time in my IT career, some of the best IT people I've worked with were music majors. So the idea that somehow participation in music excludes some children from this program seems unwise. And I understand the constraints we're under right now, but I just made the suggestion I would put the idea out there. If we want more opportunities for more kids, adults should start to identify themselves from their comfort level of the current way of life.
Anything further from the board? I also am in favor of this technical program, I think it's very beneficial. Personally, I'm certainly opposed to it, using it very much for next year, but I do think that this is another indication of needing to put in the scheduling process, the scheduling review in progress. We could talk about some very special changes for readers, you know, various communities and these sorts of program changes, the program changes we're talking about here tonight, it has to have a very nice, so by cloud program, I do think it reiterates or reinforces that we need to get right on to the scheduling issue, because we're going to have problems actually doing all these things if we don't address that.
I think at one of the future board meetings, we should have Mr. Kirman and Miss Tack to our lead efforts, we still have committed an update for that process.
Is there any community comments on the student's report?
Tony Andrews, my secretary.
Unfortunately, no.
Okay. Hi, I'm Mary Johnson of the County Real Estate and Avenue of Tulsa. First of all, I think this is great that we are bringing technology to the middle school. I started a legal league, we're a team, this year at McWolde, we can, we have students, and there's, kids started hearing about it, and I'm going to try to start two teams next year because there's so much demand from our students that want to do robotics, they want to do technology, and so there is definitely a need to provide that for our students. That being said, I also want to echo Mr. Meyer's comment about scheduling, because my fifth grader is in MISO, Monty's Symphony Orchestra, and in order to be in there, you have to play in your school's orchestra on your instruments. I've already said before earlier that I do value foreign language. That being said, if my son wants to continue in MISO and he wants to take in foreign language, he is currently doing a robotics team, but he will not be able to have access to any of these science and technology wonderful programs that we're bringing to our students. So I know that, that this isn't the time, but that, I appreciate that that's been mentioned, and I hope that that is addressed, because when I, again, like Mr. Meyer, when I was in, and I guess it wasn't junior high school, but I took orchestra, I took French, and the book every day, I was in science and technology, I did, we did, we even did art, we did a third year, we did home ec, arts, industrial arts, all the way through ninth grade, and I, I guess my son hasn't started middle school yet, and I'm very surprised to hear that my son won't be able to have all those things, I'm baffled how that fit into my curriculum and it doesn't fit in in what else, so thank you very much.
What do you, I just got the next step we've got to propose.
Well, that's approval, I have to be meeting through this.
Thank you very much. I think just then, few of these students' reports.
Mr. Anderson, I would like to compliment you on your choice of time.
No, thank you.
Good evening. At pretty important, we, the school board did vote on the guidelines that we'll use in Montoya for determining space available for students to enter District City Open Home and Program. A new recommendation that comes forth from the Department of Public Instruction is that in addition to determining space available in the district, that school boards also identify the process that would-- A new recommendation that comes forth from the Department of Public Instruction is that in addition to determining space available in the district, that school board also identify the process that will be used for determining whether or not there is space, vacant special education programs. So when we start calling students off the waiting list, when a family applies for open enrollment, they do need to identify if a student has an IEP. And if we, students on the waiting list that have an IEP, we have authority to review that IEP and determine if space is available or not. Previous, this is new recommendations from the Department of Public Instruction. It's not something that they suggested in the past. It's based on the appeal process. So if, for example, I would deny an applicant based on the fact that they have an IEP, we determine that there's not space available. If the family would appeal it to the Department of Public Instruction, the department would ask, did I have worked through guidelines to determine whether or not that space exists? Therefore, we're making a recommendation for determining space available in our special education programs. We're looking at special education teacher to, teacher case load of one to five in our schools and for speech and language, there follows a one to fifteen for speech and language pathology. Use those numbers for determining space.
One second, can you repeat that?
For special education teachers, we're looking at space available, special education space available in the building to establish case load of one to five for special education teachers and one to fifteen for speech and language pathologists of science development.
Is that a change from what we currently do as far as case loads? Or is it...
We've never defined through policy, reported to policy, what the case load would be for open enrollment applicants. Our current case loads for special education teachers and speech pathologists are higher than that.
So this will reduce the number of special education students we've checked compared...
This essentially would, essentially if there was, for example, a fourth grade seat open in a building and a student had IEP, there was most likely would be space available for that student via open enrollment. So essentially would make the amount of space available for open enrollment special education students.
All right, thank you.
All right, is there any community comments on this report? Thank you very much. I assume this will also come back in force through the board? The last item is superintendent's report. Please, Mr. Meyer will be reporting on the law made in connection.
Thank you. I attended the delegate assembly where eighteen resolutions were addressed. Two resolutions were defeated and one was referred to committee back to committee. All of the other resolutions passed, I believe. Mrs. Gufeld, this is her, please, correct me. The resolutions that were defeated were number eight, which was the WASP supports allowing local school districts discretion to use up to fifty percent of their allowance of the library aid and proceeds on the common school fund to reserve or increase the number of certified school advice. That was defeated about forty-seven in favor, fifty-two percent opposed. The, to me, the really interesting discussion came on the resolution eleven was defeated. And that was the resolution to, to limit open enrollment to three percent of resident district membership. I was educated during the session to learn that a great many rural districts support open enrollment. And that resolution was defeated seventy-seven point two nine percent opposed, twenty-two point seven one in favor. So it was a pretty stunning pushback. The, I think the note about the delegate assembly is that, and I don't know the exact details, but it seems that every school district has one vote, except maybe Milwaukee. I don't know whether other districts have more votes than one. So it's not a proportionate representation of students in the state, it's a qualified district. So a district with a hundred eighty students would have the same one vote in all those counts. So it's kind of hard to gauge what sentiment is by population of rural state, but by school district, definitely there was strong support for open enrollment. And the third resolution that received some, the intense conversation was is number twelve. And that resolution states the WASP supports limiting open enrollment into virtual charter schools. There was a motion to change the word supports to opposes. And there was a question to the parliament committee whether that was okay. And the answer to the parliament committee was yes, to change the word supports to opposes. And there was technical reason for that. So the amendment passed to change the resolution from WASP supports to WASP opposes, limiting open enrollment into virtual charter schools. And then the resolution was referred to committee. So it didn't get up with that vote. And my perception was that there was a little discomfort with reversing the intent of the resolution and the report maybe they should send it back. And I don't know if that was, Mrs. Gufeld, what was your take on that in my view? Sir, I was continuously asking for your input here.
Well, because I've served on the policy and revolutions committee for this, I, I understood a little bit beforehand what was going to happen. And the school district that proposed this particular resolution had some specific language for doing so and they were unhappy with the resolution that came forward by the committee. However, when the membership went to vote on it, there was, there was a lot of support for the opposition part of it. So obviously, there, there needed to be a lot more discussion of how this should be coming forward to the delegate assembly and then they did refer that to policy and rest. It was a, it was a very, it was a debate on the board.
So, and, and also there was a situation where one of the resolutions, the one delegate on the district supported, favored the resolution and then another delegate from the same district moved to send the resolution back to committee, added it. It did appear that the representatives in that particular district somehow weren't on the same page. And it just reminded me that our image that we reject when we send people out of the district needs to be careful because it certainly did look silly. And perhaps they had a reason for that, but the strategy wasn't apparent. So I'll leave it at that. And so, Mrs. Gufeld, you have any other observations? I know you have quite a big inside perspective because you were on the resolutions committee.
Well, that, that interesting one that you spoke about was parental choice, resolution eleven point thirteen, parental choice students with disabilities. And that was initially meant to be proposed only by Milwaukee. But what ended up happening during the pre-delegate meeting is the board member that proposed that from Milwaukee, understanding that the new governorship that we have in the state is very open to other parental choice programs and wanted to change that. So when there was, this is where it gets very interesting with the delegate assembly because then in committee, they actually made that change. And that was prior to the delegate assembly. So the actual motion, the resolution was adjusted from what was sent to the board packets based on commentary at the pre-delegate meeting, then changed in the policy and res committee meeting prior to the larger delegate assembly. And the board member from Milwaukee that wanted to refer it back was not there that evening for the pre-delegate assembly nor the, nor the committee. So it was, it was a very interesting read on what can possibly be coming down on parental choice programs, not just for Milwaukee, but it is suspected that other districts will have these sorts of programs.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Meyer or Mr. Gufeld? Well, thank you very much for attending. Maybe you can work that. I'm happy to fill out one more. Thank you. Is there any community comments on that report? Seeing that there is no other opportunity for public comment on managing the items, is there any public comment on the area items matter generally? And at this time, the school board will adjourn to executive session to consider whether the city notices circuit administrators to an automatic application of security. This discussion will include consideration of financial, cultural, social, professional history or disciplinary data, which, discussed in public, would be likely to have substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of may personally per to such history or data. This session is subject to means lost containment section one ninety-five to one hundred and one. As a note, the following is a discussion, it would be convenient to open session to take action on proposal to give notice to specified administrators to prevent automatic project extension. Is there a motion to adjourn into executive session? Is there a... Mr. Carter?
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Miffel?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Wetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Do we meet in the career session, is that correct?
Yep, I'm rolling, reporting.
It is now eleven oh seven PM and we are back in the session, calling our executive session. May I please have a motion, the school board operates Dr. Williams, the city notices to specify administrators as discussed in closed session, that the term of their contract is not to cancel another contract will not be automatically extended. Thank you, Mrs. Randall?
Second.
You will take a roll call vote, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Wetter?
I'm busy.
Are you standing?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Miffel?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries six to one. I believe that that concludes our business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You'll take a roll call vote, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Wetter?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Miffel?
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer?
Yes.